Good evening. We'd like to call the meeting of the City Council of February 9, 2015, to order. Would Clerk call a roll, please?
Councilmember Berman?
Here.
Councilmember Burt?
Here.
Councilmember Bird DeBois?
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Here.
Mayor Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Niss? Councilmember Scharf? Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Wolbach?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you very much. And our first item on the agenda is a study session on railroad quiet zones in Palo Alto. And Richard Hackman will be our staff member on this, and you'll be making a presentation to us. So, thank you, Richard, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Holman and City Council. For a number of people I know, both in this community and other communities, they have been very interested in hearing what we have to say on quiet zones, so hopefully you find this educational and a nice starting place for a community dialogue on this issue. So, what I'll do is a brief presentation on quiet zones. It mostly covers what was in the staff report, but does provide some additional information. And then, following that, we'll have public comment, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about quiet zones as well, and take direction on next steps. So, jumping into the presentation. A quiet zone is a section of rail where train horns are not routinely sounded in or near at grade crossings. However, even in a quiet zone, a train horn can always be sounded at the engineer's discretion. Quiet zones do not eliminate the use of train bells, either. Per the Federal Railroad Administration, if any one of the following four supplemental safety measures is implemented, an at-grade crossing is automatically, and automatically is one of the key elements to this, eligible to become a quiet zone. The first is installing quad gates, which is where four crossing arms come down; installing median barriers of 100 feet in length, with an exception for 60 feet in certain cases; converting a crossing to one-way traffic, or eliminating an at-grade crossing. In terms of who has the right to establish a quiet zone, any city with an at-grade crossing, such as those in Palo Alto, has the right to establish a quiet zone or zones. The right of a city to implement a quiet zone is not dependent on the rail operators impacted by the establishment of a quiet zone. It would be the city's decision. The process to establish a quiet zone is mandated by the FRA, and involves both a noticing and common procedure to establish a quiet zone. First, by providing all stakeholders, in this case it would be Caltrain and the freight operators, with a 60-day notice of intent that the city is seeking to establish a quiet zone, and following the notice of intent, providing a 21-day notice of establishment for those operating in the corridor. And following that 21-day notice of establishment, the operators would then be expected to adhere to the quiet zone. So, just to give you more of a visual and audio representation of what we have now and what a crossing might be like as a quiet zone, I've got two videos for you. The first is a non-quiet-zone video, and just by chance, a YouTube user posted one of the Alma crossing. So, this will give you a demonstration of the "as-is" conditions that we have today. And then, the next video was taken, I believe, in Connecticut, and will show you what a quiet zone looks and sounds like. So, again, that's what we have today. You can see the gates go down, the bells start sounding. That would continue in a quiet zone, but the train horn, which you heard as it approached the crossing, it has to blow its horn twice when it's between 15 and 20 seconds away from the crossing, and then again, once it goes through the crossing, that's what would be eliminated, and you will see that demonstrated on the next video. And if you notice, the median barriers and the quad gates. So, four arms are going down, and they also have median barriers, and those are considered supplemental safety measures. If you'd like, I could have let the entire freight train run through for two minutes, but I think you all get the point. So, from there, we can get into a little bit of the details about what it might take to establish a quiet zone if we were to do so. Caltrain's position on quiet zones has been this: They're willing to work with local municipalities if one seeks to establish a quiet zone. However, their position has been that if a quiet zone is established, the city would then assume liability for any incidents that occur in the quiet zone. According to the FRA, the courts will ultimately determine who will be held liable if a collision occurs at a grade crossing located within a quiet zone, based upon the facts of each case. Again, there is no legal prohibition on the creation of quiet zones if a city chooses to do so. And the city attorney's office has concluded that the establishment of a quiet zone may increase the city's exposure to potential liability. In terms of the resource impacts of quiet zones, if the city were to pursue one or more quiet zones, it is likely the city will incur the costs of crossing, design, and implementation improvements. Quad gates would be more expensive than median barriers, for example, so the range of price would vary greatly depending on what our community felt was appropriate to make it as safe as we'd like it to be. So, the key policy impacts of quiet zones? The principal policy issues regarding quiet zones boil down to two up on the screen. Is there a real or perceived relationship between train horns and safety that could be compromised if one or more quiet zones are established? And the second is, is the potential for reduced train horn noise worth the cost of improvements and potential increase in liability to the city? Some additional policy considerations are that the city is currently addressing a number of other rail initiatives, including Caltrain electrification, Caltrain safety improvements, Caltrain service improvements, Caltrain funding and management improvements, Palo Alto's grade separation study, and the future impacts of California high-speed rail. So, one thing that would be great to hear from you is, how does the City Council prioritize quiet zones in the context of these other issues? So, with that, we welcome your questions, and any comments you may have about this.
Councilmembers, I'm inviting questions at this point in time, questions or comments, frankly, and I have only three cards from the public. If members of the public would care to speak to this item, if you'd turn any card, that would be most appreciated. So, councilmembers? Councilmember Burt?
Well, I know that we typically hear from members of the public at the end of a study session, but occasionally, we have them go first. In this circumstance, I think we might be informed by some of the members of the public in a significant way, and would it be okay with the chair to have them come first?
I thought of that as well. The only thing is, why don't we ask a couple of us to ask questions?
Sure.
To give members of the public time to turn their cards in? And since I've called for those, if anybody else wants to speak to this item, so in the meantime, Councilmember Phil Seth, did you have questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one question, which involves the legal aspect of this. Do we know if any municipality has ever been sued by anybody over an accident at a quiet crossing? Is there any history of this?
We don't have the ability to answer that in a categorical way, as far as across the country, but in terms of in our region and area, we did not identify any suit that raised that question.
Okay.
Councilmember Berman?
Do we have any idea what the possible cost might be? I mean, I'll use Alma as an example, but what the cost might be of implementing a quiet zone at the Alma grade crossing? So, if you were just to do the median barriers, I think you'd be looking at something less than $100,000. Quad gates for any crossing would likely range for design, implementation, construction, in between $500,000 and $1 million.
And quad gates weren't required?
Quad gates are one of the four options. The issue is that at Churchill, Meadow, and Charleston, it'd be very difficult to put in the median barriers with the required length because of how close Alma Street is to the tracks.
Okay. But Alma, you would be able to put in, or Alma already?
Yeah, so Alma already has median barriers, and I went out there today and measured them. And on the west side of Alma, they're 90 feet. The median's 90 feet, so it'd need to be extended by 10 feet. And on the east side, it's 55 feet before a break for bicyclists, and then another nine feet. So, if that median was lengthened to 60 feet, we could probably get an exemption, since it's, the break is only for a turning movement for bicyclists. If we couldn't get the exemption, we just have to extend it all the way. So, we would be looking at, we could do a quiet zone there with minimal physical improvements, but it would, there would need to be a discussion and an analysis of the safety implications of that, and whether or not, just because you could do it, would you want to, you know, say not add quad gates in addition to the median barriers? Because if you notice on the video up there, they had both median barriers-
And quad gates.
And quad gates.
Sure. Thank you.
Sure.
Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Just follow-up. Did I understand you to say that the city would be responsible for paying for any cost?
It's likely. We could obviously reach out to Caltrain and see if they would be willing to pay for them. However, the impression we've gotten from them is that this is not a, a quiet zone is not a safety improvement, so it seems unlikely that we, that they would contribute to something that they deem as not improving the safety of the corridor.
The gate you quoted as $500 to $1 million, that's per crossing?
Yes, and I think, you know, we could, it could be done closer to $500,000. But, you know, that's design, construction, implementation, all of that. We would need to get Caltrain's approval to do work within their right-of-way. The California Public Utilities Commission and the FRA would both have to come out and inspect and improve the work before the quiet zone could be established. So, there's a lot that goes into the process beyond just adding an extra armbar.
And you're putting them on both sides of each side of the road?
That is correct. So, you go from two to four.
Now, would that cause any trouble with turns of people trying to get out of the way of the train, and having the call gate drop in front of them before they get onto Alma, for example?
Well, the one issue that people raise is that, right now, if you happen to be stuck on the tracks and the arms go down, you can essentially pull into the lanes heading in the opposite direction that you should be, and get out of the way of the train. If there's four arms coming down, you would have to drive under or through one of those gate arms.
Yeah, that doesn't seem an improvement in safety. One last thing, a letter came mentioning insurance, that there's liability insurance that other communities are purchasing. Do you have any idea what that would cost?
So, the city has current excess liability insurance over $1 million, and we reported on some experiences in neighboring communities where the carrier or the group, the cooperative that carried the insurance, wished to either carve out the quiet zone, or separately negotiate for a policy that would need to be paid for to cover that zone, obviously, because of the possibility of an incident there that could be quite expensive.
But you don't have any dollar figures on that?
No, no. Without direction from council, you know, we're not in a position to be negotiating. And currently, our current coverage, you know, does exist for liability and excess of $1 million, and certainly, significant property or physical injury case involving a train, you know, could be in that range. So, you know, under our current policy, we are covered, but we just want to note to council that that has the possibility of changing, and then meaning that we would need to separately contract for insurance, or bear those costs as self-insurance.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burt?
The median barriers, I want to make sure I'm picturing them correctly. Are those up rail and down rail of the intersection? Am I getting that right? They're on?
They're perpendicular to the intersection, the median barriers.
They're perpendicular to the crossing.
Yeah, to the, so, they would, where the yellow stripes currently are?
Yeah.
They would run over those.
They run down the middle of the roadway?
Of the roadway.
And, so, the possibility of having both median barriers and quad gates is viable?
Yes, the FRA is fully supportive of that.
And do we, is there any data on the safety of horns with current dual gates versus no horns in quads, and versus no horns and quads plus median?
Councilmember Burt, you raise a good question. The difficulty with answering it, because we did look into it briefly, is it's been very difficult for us to effectively analyze what hasn't happened. And so, every crossing has their existing conditions, but it's really hard to say this incident would or would not have happened had this measure been there or not.
Well, but I would assume that there's data from before installation of these changes and after, and that in aggregate, that would be meaningful.
In other locations, I'm, there is some data that we could provide you.
Okay, and I, I'm not looking for us to do the data accumulation. I'm assuming that this has been done at a higher level, but perhaps not.
Just, if I may add one more thing, one of the complicating factors with this is that a lot of the quiet zones established, at least in California, that staff has studied, are unique in their characteristics, and very different than the corridor we have. For example, there's a number of quiet zones in Richmond, but there you have freight rail operating at about 10 miles an hour, versus here, where we have trains traveling at much higher speeds. So, I think it's important that when we pull the data that you've mentioned, that we make sure we're getting it from corridors of similar characteristics.
Right, and I was assuming this was national data. There's no reason that, or even, maybe internationally, no reason that it's California-based in particular, and probably it's a smaller data set here. Okay. You, in the presentation, you stated, or showed, shared with us Caltrain's position on liability and the, what the courts have taken. Has there been any discussion with Caltrain about the contradiction between what they're claiming and what you've said the FRA has stated about how the courts would address this?
I have reached out to Caltrain and requested that their legal team provide with us a written statement on their position on quiet zones, and we have not been able to obtain that.
Okay. And Atherton put in quad gates, right?
That is correct. Atherton does have quad gates.
But they did not establish a quiet zone along with the quad gates?
That is correct.
Okay. Finally, I hadn't appreciated, although it makes sense in my memory now, that there's a second blast to the horns after the train passes the intersection, and do you know what the reasoning is for that second blast?
The second blast is supposed to be done as the train goes through the intersection. So, you did the first two blasts 15 to 20 seconds out, and then, right as you approach the intersection, a blast which the engineer often holds as the locomotive and a substantial amount of the train go through, and that one is quite loud.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember DeBois?
So, I was going to ask the question about insurance, just to follow up on Councilmember Schmidt. I guess some, there was a citizen that sent out a letter that said Novato and San Rafael have insurance specifically for quiet zones. So, I guess more of a comment than a question at this point, but it'd be interesting to know how much that insurance costs, you know, if our current insurance didn't cover it. And then, just broadly, do you have any idea how long it would take from kind of start to implementation, to go through this process?
It would depend on whether or not we did quad gates or median barriers, but I think that if the council wanted to move expeditious- But I think that if the council wanted to move expeditiously, it could be done in a 12 to 24 month timeframe.
That's it, thank you.
Especially for, for quad gates. If you're talking median barriers only, a little bit faster. But you know, you've got the 60-day noticing period, the 21-day implementation period, you've got to have the FRA and the CPC come out. So all these things, when you start stacking them up realistically, it would take some time.
And is there a chance if we just did medians, that they would say that's not enough?
If we did medians, it would be enough, but the only crossing that would allow for them would be the Alma Street crossing because of the configuration.
Right, okay, thanks.
And I have just a couple of questions, and then we have four members of the public who wish to speak to this item. My questions are, how did Atherton, or you mentioned Richmond too, how did they fund their improvements? We'll call them improvements.
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I believe that Atherton's improvements, they don't have a quiet zone, they have quad gates, but I believe they were self-funded. But I don't know that for sure.
And then do we have anything that measures, I don't remember seeing it, do we have anything that measures how noise at the crossings has changed in Palo Alto in the last five, 10, 15 years?
This morning I looked at it, and right now, train horns that operate on this corridor are required to blow a horn between 96 and 110 decibels, which for a frame of reference, 100 decibels is a jack, the sound of a jackhammer operating. So the FRA issues a mandate on the decibel level which a horn must be blown, and then Caltrain and the freight operators must adhere to that.
And as I recall, this increased a few years ago, did it not, or did it?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, we have four members of the public, as I mentioned.
Madam Mayor, could I just make, as a follow-up to your question about funding, I'm going to state the obvious here, but obvious, given the estimates that Mr. Hackman shared on the costs on the quad barriers, we're looking at $2 to $4 million for those, the additional costs if there were medians, and of course, we'd go out and get that estimate for you on what the potential increased liability cost would be. So, I mean, it's not a small amount of money. I put in the context of the infrastructure study we did, you know, over the past few years and trying to cobble together funding for an infrastructure plan. This obviously is not included in that, so it would just be a down-the-road consideration we'd have to take up.
Okay, thank you. So we have actually five speakers. You'll have three minutes apiece. Martin Summer to be followed by Elizabeth Alexis.
Good evening, my name's Martin Summer. I live at 427 Alma Street, directly across from University Avenue train station and facing the train station. Before I get started though, I, from one Missourian to another, I would like to congratulate Mayor Karen Holman on her position. It's great to see other Midwesterns out here doing their part. So on to the quiet zone, I'm, I'm really asking you to support the quiet zone, just to do some numbers real quick, and, and not only support it, but potentially extend it all the way to University Avenue. Some numbers, so we roughly have 90 trains a day coming in and out of University Avenue. The trains are blowing their horn, coming into the station and out of the station every time. This goes on from 5:00 in the morning until 1:00 at night. And, and some of the conductors, and I've addressed this with Caltrain, but I've gotten no response, have the audacity to actually have their own personalized tone sequence coming into the station. So imagine yourself sitting there in your home and you get this, doot, 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 and these guys repeat it, day after day after day. So I, I welcome this move, and I just, I really ask for the city's support on this because Caltrain has basically been silent on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Elizabeth Alexis to be followed by Zuhair Mahubi.
Okay, I have sent extensive comments by, by email. I apologize that these probably should have been here last week. But I will try and touch on the points, and maybe I can follow up on some of the questions that were asked earlier. I'm representing card tonight. The part of our website that we get the most web traffic to is the part about noise and, and the harmful effects of noise. And it turns out that noise is really bad for you, especially low-frequency noise, which is what train, train horn noise is. This is why everybody on a business flight will have those headphones, the noise reduction ones, because that gets rid of the low frequency. So if you think about the noise that's coming from the trains, it's basically that kind of thing. It's tiring, even if you don't think you notice it, it's very disruptive to sleep patterns. And people, researchers now are focusing on this as a serious health, public health problem. The FRA knew this, so I think it's important to talk about the history of this rule, to have some context for why we should absolutely be pursuing quiet zones, and whether we implement full quiet zones throughout the city or we do a combination of quiet zones. And I'm a big fan of wayside horns, which are just a different kind of horn. There is, the FRA wants us to do this. The FRA is the Federal Railroad Administration, they are Division of the Department of Transportation, they are extremely conservative and very safety-conscious. The horn safety rule was implemented in 2005, after, about 15 years after Congress wanted it be done. Before then, it was actually optional to do horns, and so you can, in 2005, it is fair to say that the noise level went up if you were in a community where horns were being sounded. But what the FRA had realized was that horns are basically the cheap man's safety device, that it's because you didn't spend the money to actually make your crossing safe. So it's just like going around a blind corner on a single-lane mountain road. Yes, horns will make a big difference in safety, but really what you should do is not have blind, you know, blind, single roads. And so the horn rule is designed to get cities to get over this barrier that the railroads were sort of being an impediment to this and to make the crossings safer. So on an insurance level, there have been 313, there's an FRA study which I sent you, 313 accidents in quiet zone simplicity implementation. That is, I will note, 300, that is 25 less than there had been in the, before they actually went into quiet zone, so it showed that they were safer. But there have been no, out of that 313, there have been no liability issues associated with a quiet zone. The railroads don't want to do this, they're trying to scare people. So insurance companies vary, many of them now understand there is no additional liability. It is not clear if Caltrain would have the right to try and switch the liability to the city. Of course, they'll try, I mean, they can always ask you to, you know, take on liability that you don't have. But this was designed not to transfer liability, it was designed as a, it is a specific mitigation within the FRA's EIS from 2005 that cities, they assumed and expected and wanted cities to adopt quiet zones across the board. So I don't see how Caltrain could make you take the liability for it.
Thank you, Elizabeth Alexis. And any questions for the speaker? Next speaker is Zuhair Mahubi. An apologies if I.
That's fine, close enough. Hi, my name is Zuhair. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff, I know that, thanks. I'd like first to thank the staff, I know that they're really spread thin and they've done a great job to actually be brought up to speed on this. I want to maybe make two or three points. The first one on the liability, like Richard said, it's a, maybe it will increase liability, and I don't know if you can put that slide back, but there's a lot of maybes in there, there's a lot of uncertainty. And I think there's an, the FRA actually said that it will file an amicus brief if any city is sued on this. And like the previous speaker said, they're actually encouraging cities to do this, and I think the Caltrain and other carriers just want to scare cities for this, from this. The second point I want to make is, Caltrain is not actually the only problem. We live really close to, I mean, of course, because I'm talking today, I live close to one of those crossings. And one of the big problems is the freight trains that runs at night. It runs at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. Trust me, waking up in the middle of the night to something like that is never fun. And I, I can't believe that there's that many car at that time of the night that you need to sound a horn that loud to like tell them not to cross something. And I personally wouldn't feel comfortable advocating for this at other crossings the way they are right now, but at the Alma Crossing, if you, if you drive by it, it's obvious there's a train coming. And like I think Richard said, with a median barrier, with very, very minimum improvements, we can have this in place. Of course, the safest thing would be to stop the trains, no one wants to do that. The next safest thing to do is a non-grade crossings, and you guys are doing studies for that that are going to run hundreds of millions of dollars over years, and I will let you know, I think if you look at those studies, I think the Alma Crossing was not one of them, it was looking at the other ones. So this would be a possibility to at least make sure that we have a quiet zone at the Alma Crossings while the other ones do get at a non-grade crossing. And I think the last point I want to make is, I was, this is my first interaction with government, and I was warned about the Palo Alto process, about things taking five years. And I think some of you just ran on a platform of saying, we want more kind of executive action, and I'd really, really love to see that. And, you know, like, of course, we're all dedicated, we want to look at facts, and I, I would like you to do that, do process, but don't take five years to do it, don't take half a million or a million dollars to do it, just kind of do it in an efficient way, you guys have the executive action to it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, we hope you give you reason to come back. Robert Neft to be followed by Olga Moroshchenko.
Good evening. When I look at the grade crossings in adjacent cities in Mountain View and in Sunnyvale, I see much larger setbacks for the, for the waiting cars and double-sided crossing gates which open and close more quickly. And as my experience with, helping with the Charleston-Racadero corridor project, it looks like some of those kinds of features are getting added to, in the plans there for Charleston. And so I, I'm, it's kind of presented as well, Caltrain would like this, and I'd really appreciate a description of what Caltrain is looking for from a safety point of view to improve the crossings in Palo Alto. My personal concern also is in maintaining bicycle access and, and comfortable bicycle travel through those crossings. But also, how much will those safety improvements say on Charleston do to implement a lot of what we have to do to make it a quiet zone?
Thank you, and our final speaker is Olga Moroshchenko.
Good evening, congratulations to Mrs. Holman for becoming mayor. I would like to join previous speakers, and in particular, Elizabeth, who pointed out medical effects and effects of, on our health and children's health by loud Caltrain. I joined one of Alma community just about 2004, and indeed, in couple of years, sound increased dramatically. And in my previous short speech, I mentioned article, now I found it in Stanford Medicine, there was published an article that suicide risk increased dramatically in sleepless adults. I'm sure that children have own issues. There are numerals, I'm biologist, there are numerous studies going on about importance of non-interrupted sleep and rest for health of children, for health of adults, especially for people with some problems. And if person has depression, sleepless plus depression, it's really big trigger to unfortunate events. And another thing which I want to mention, just to appeal to common sense, each of us who lived or spent some time in Europe probably notice how quiet trains and transportation in Europe is. When you stay in railway station, you basically don't hear approaching train. They slight, quiet, less, quiet, unnoticedly, which does not increase percentage of suicide rates or problems. And in most crowded stations in European countries, there is no such thing as loud horns, et cetera, when train approaches. So they probably consider all these risks and all these problems and found solution which is reasonable. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. So we'll return to councilmembers for any further questions or comments. Councilmember DeBois?
So I have one more quick question. One of the residents brought the issue of trains at the stations. Would a quiet zone address that at all, or would they still sound their horn at each station?
It's, my understanding that the quiet zone could be extended through, a quiet zone has to be at least one half mile in length. And it's my understanding that the quiet zone could extend through a station, but again, the engineer always has the discretion of using the horn, and so that would be a place where it would probably be used at times.
My impression is that's for the people standing on the platform.
Too close, yeah. Right now, they, you know, they use the bell unless people are too close.
So nobody really brought up the location of the horns, I mean, I think it was in the report, it sounds like Caltrain would potentially put the horns under the train, which muffles this down, but the freight trains would not move the horn. I think it's interesting, Caltrain's saying that this isn't a safety issue when we're talking about adding basically additional safety measures. That was too bad that, you know, Caltrain wouldn't consider helping out on this. We just had Caltrain here to talk about the electrification EIR, and it would have been unfortunate, unfortunate, it would have been great to have this session before then to have brought up this issue. So for me, I think, you know, this is an issue, but I think it's critically important that we focus on trenching or grade crossing, which I think is a much better and a long-term solution. Grade separations would help reduce noise, increase safety, and I really think we need to kind of focus on that long-term solution. And so I'd like to see us urgently pursue grade separations, use our grade separation study to go after funding at kind of all levels of government. And I think we should be laser-focused as a council on the proposed transportation ballot measure for 2016 and see if we can get some money from that for grade separations. And so for me, you know, I'm not for train noise, but I would rather us focus, I'd see it as a trade-off of money and staff time, and I would rather see us focus on trenching or grade crossings. So, you know, I'm going to listen to my colleagues, but at this point, I would not support quiet zones on their own.
Councilmember Wobak?
To follow on what Councilmember DeBois was saying, I actually am also very supportive of finding a way to economically feasibly grade separate or at grade crossings, both for transportation, also for safety reasons. I would, I would say that, you know, I think we should continue to explore ways to implement a quiet zone in the interim so that this doesn't take five years. If it, if it doesn't cause an undue burden for, for staff time, but I do appreciate raising those points that we don't want to expend unnecessary staff time, but I think that it's probably doable, but I think it's worth consideration and look at this a little bit more.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, first I'll address this issue of whether we have an either-or choice between these measures or grade separations, and I don't see them as either-or at all. Grade separations are issues that are hundreds of millions of dollars, that are hopefully someday obtainable, and would have huge design and then acquisition of properties that would potentially take many years to acquire and build. And so I don't know whether, if we move aggressively, whether that's a decade-away process if we ever get there. But I don't see these as choices of one versus the other. And so I, I very much look at the quiet zone as an independent issue and, and not a, an either-or with grade steps. Some of the most compelling information that I think we heard tonight, and which I'd like to, to see more details on, are two of our speakers really spoke about train noise as not merely being a quality-of-life issue, but a health issue. And in particular, the impacts of low-decibel noise. And so I would, as we move forward, I would very much like to look at that public health issue and, and in conjunction, get more. issue, and, and in conjunction, get more data on the safety of quad gates, and in the case of the Alma location, the potential safety of quad gates plus the medians. And it'll be interesting whether we have improved track safety, as Elizabeth had talked about, the FRA actually encouraging or hoping that communities will look at physical barriers as a better safety alternative than noise. And when we think about the track safety, we really, in our community, have two elements to it. We have safety and security. And in reality, our greatest health risks of, of trains directly injuring people is around security, not the, rarely have we had an inadvertent fatality on the tracks. And horns don't really provide what I'm describing as security, which is to help us prevent people from being on the tracks who are deliberately doing so. And so that's an important distinction when we worry about safety. It's only the inadvertent risks that we're, we would be potentially addressing with horns, and whether these other measures might in fact even address that more effectively. And then, the, I recall, and Elizabeth has schooled me previously, but I'm not remembering the details of the wayside horn alternative, so I think we'll want to hear more about how that might function. And I think it was also informative that when we, when we talk about, some members of the community might say, "Well, this is essentially a pre-existing condition for the community. It's always been there." And I had already been feeling, "Well, the number of trains that we have today is more than we had in the past, and the number we'll have in the future is more yet." So that level of the condition is changing, has changed, and will change for the worse yet. But second, if the, if I understood it right, was the decimal level was, was increased in 2005? Is that what was stated? Yeah. And, and so if we can have that follow-up information when we have this come back for us as well, that speaks to both the escalating problem that has been occurring on both frequency and volume of noise, and then when you add to that the increasing recognition of the health risk associated with that noise, this is really making a stronger and stronger case for us looking very seriously at trying to move forward with implementation. And then finally, I concur with the point that Councilmember DuBois made, which is there, there are safety-related aspects to this, and I'm not sure that, that it should be necessarily purely local funding, whether Caltrain should have a role in it, or there may be other grants. And I have in the back of my head that, a recollection that Atherton did not fully locally fund their quad gates. And so I think we want to look at that. I was just trying to find it online and wasn't able to locate it, but we have people that have been involved in the rail matters who, Greg Conlin, who has been really up to speed on that, and he can answer that, I'm sure. So I would support us moving forward with next steps on, on evaluating quad gates, or I should say, quiet zones.
Councilmember Philseth?
Thanks. So, so my, my, my biggest question coming into this was, was around the legal exposure to the city, and I'm feeling more comfortable with that one. As I was reading through material, yeah, that was sort of, you know, I think Zuhar and I traded emails a while ago on this, too. I think, you know, there was some discussion about grade separation or trenching versus doing this. And I think Councilmember Burt's point is that, you know, about sort of differences of orders of magnitude and cost is reasonable. But also, you know, some of these grade crossings are not going to be grade separated or are not feasible to be grade separated or trenched anyway, right? And I have to be careful since I live next to one of those. But, but so from that perspective, you know, to me at this point, it seems like it's mostly an economic thing, okay? If it's going to cost the city $10,000, then we should go do it, right? If it's going to be $4 million, then, you know, we're going to have to prioritize this relative to other kinds of capital improvements and so forth that we, we need to do. So I would say, to the extent that, you know, Caltrain can fund it, or that it's not going to be a big financial impact to the city, I'd be supportive of it. But again, if it's going to cost millions and millions of dollars, then I think it's got to get prioritized against everything else.
Councilmember Berman?
Well, I thought about just not saying anything, but I think you guys are looking for instruction moving forward, so I agree with pretty much everything Councilmember Philseth said. I'll be more specific than you were, but the Alma Crossing isn't up for grade separation. I mean, it's just not possible being right next to the creek for trenching that intersection. So this isn't an option, and that's where we've heard the most kind of angst and concern from residents. And I'm, by no means am I saying right now that I'd absolutely do this. You know, it will be an economic analysis based on the cost and based on the ability to find alternative funding. We're very lucky that we have a very competent staff that is often very good at finding alternative funding for things. And maybe this will be a similar situation, maybe not. But it'd be great if you guys took a little time to look into that and see what opportunities existed. And that would help us, you know, actually do that analysis, that, the policy analysis and economic analysis that will come to us, you know, if you guys bring this back.
Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Just to echo the comments of my colleagues, I think it is clear that the priority of the city in the long run should be trenching or grade separations, and this should be the focus and attention of the, of the staff. But in the meantime, working toward quiet zones seems feasible, realistic, and affordable to move in that direction.
And I'll just pile on by saying, it's been mentioned a few times that noise is a health issue. We all know that that is. Council has adopted this year, healthy city, healthy community, so that's something that we should be sensitive to, it would seem like. But nobody's mentioned how sleep disruption is also a health issue, unless, I don't remember if Elizabeth mentioned that or not, but, but sleep disruption is absolutely a health issue as well. And something else that we should mention is, you know, the frequency of trains has gone up. So that's also added to the, the noise impact. So it's been mentioned that, yeah, we're not looking at grade separation at Alma, so I think we should, to the extent, well, I think we should, we should at least look at what we might do there. Whatever we can do there is going to be an improvement, since we're not going to trench there, or, or actually grade separate there. So when this comes back, I'm also interested in the cost to other communities, what kind of funding sources they've had, what other communities have, have taken quiet zones into consideration and adopted them. And you said, "I believe that Atherton had installed quad gates, but not established a quiet zone." Is that correct? Okay. So anyplace else that we have had the, have some data that we can pull from would be great, and looking at alternate funding sources. And I'd say one thing about the Churchill intersection, that's the one intersection, rail intersection in the whole town, that I think would, the safety would, actually would be improved by quad gates, because, you know, we do have the bells on the gates that come down, when they're coming down. But that intersection, I find, a little bit tricky sometimes, and I find myself a little closer than what I find to be really comfortable. So those would be all of the comments. So thank you all. Thanks to the members of the public for coming. And that includes that item. Was staff has any wrap-up question or comment to make? Okay. Thank you very much. So let the record show that Councilmember Scharf has joined us. Welcome. And our next item on the agenda is agenda changes, additions and deletions. And our guests left already? My goodness. We had some distinguished guests from PAC 50, Den 5, and they have already come and gone. So, okay. City manager comments?
Councilmember Burt, did you have something under agenda changes and deletions?
Well, I'm just concerned whether we're going to be able to get through all the agenda items tonight, and given that item 11, I think, is liable to, even though we're going to have more than one meeting on it, an hour and 15 or 30 minutes, maybe cutting it close. So I, I just wanted to have us consider whether one of the colleagues' memos should be deferred to a subsequent meeting, either item 13 or 14. And so I recommend we consider that.
So here's, here's what I'm going to propose that we do, and you're welcome to weigh in, of course. But here's what I'm proposing that we do, is that we take up, we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule right now, that we take up item number 11, and no later than 9:15, we look at whether we're going to take up items 13 and 14. And what I would propose that we would do for 11, and I, we don't know at this point in time how many speakers we're going to have, but what I'd propose that we would do for item 11 is listen to the public staff presentation, of course, hear any high-level questions by council members, and then go to questions, excuse me, go to comments and potential motions. But what I would suggest we do, rather than trying to make a motion that might capture 15 different things, that we look at this having a series of motions, then we could, if we get to motions, and then we carry the rest of the conversation forward, including any subsequent and further motions. What I do not want to do is get to 9:15 and somebody make a motion at that point in time. That's what I'd really like to avoid, if at all possible, because that means we will be here for an extended period of time, and it's very hard to continue the conversation about a motion, a single motion that's extensive, into a second meeting. So, does that make sense? Councilmembers willing to hang in there with that? City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as you're planning your evening, I, I did know under the two colleagues' memos if one was more time-sensitive than the other or not. My recollection was 14 had a timeframe, and 13 did not, but I just point that out.
I was going to save that for, if we get to that later, but...
Yes. So are we all okay with going and checking in no later than 9:15? Because we don't have staff here for either one of those items, correct? For either 13 or 14?
Well, that sounds great to us. Molly and I would be happy to...
No important staff.
No, additional staff.
We did hear about interrupted sleep as a health issue, so anyway, no, we'll be here, we're fine.
Be careful what you say, right? Okay. With that, we will go to city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, just a few things. First of all, I did want to share that the city received, along with other jurisdictions around the state last week, a notice from the Department of Housing and Community Development, otherwise known as HCD, at the state level, in conjunction with the Strategic Growth Council, and the release of the fiscal year 2014-15 Notice of Funding Availability of approximately $120 million for the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program. A copy of the Notice of Funding Availability, a concept proposal application, and instructions can be found on the state Housing and Community Development's website. Concept proposals are due, fast turnaround by 5:00 p.m. on February 19, 2015, and questions may be directed to AHSC@hcd.ca.gov. Again, that is state affordable housing funding that's available. The VITA Tax Assistance for Low-Income Taxpayer Service will start this Saturday, February 7, at Mitchell Park Library. VITA volunteers will provide free basic 2014 income tax return preparation for qualified individuals who earn less than $53,000, are disabled, and/or are 60 years or older. So folks who are in that category, who would like some free assistance, please check our library website for more information, including qualifications and what a visitor would need to bring with them. This will take place at the Mitchell Park Library in the Midtown Room on Saturdays from February 7 through April 11, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and drop-in only. So please share this information with anyone you may know who qualifies, whether it's customers, family, friends. And the Palo Alto Arts Center and the Palo Alto Arts Center Foundation have been selected as one of 20 organizations nationwide involved in a two-year arts management training and consultancy program with the DeVos Institute of Arts Management at the University of Maryland. Over the next two years, the institute will provide intensive training in long-term artistic planning, board development and engagement, marketing, fundraising, and strategic planning. So congratulations to Karen Kinzel and her team. And then from the clerk's office, again, just an announcement that the city is seeking applicants for the Human Relations Commission, the Public Art Commission, and the Utilities Advisory Commission. The deadline to apply is March 3, and each term for each of those commissions is for three years, beginning May 1, 2015, and running through April 30, 2018. We have three expiring terms on the Human Relations Commission. Ray Baketti, Theresa Chen, and Diane Moran are leaving, so three terms available on the Human Relations Commission. Three expiring terms on the Public Art Commission, Kathleen Kavanaugh, Ben Mijagi, and Vicki Toback. And two expiring terms on the Utilities Advisory Commission, John Melton and Asher Waldfogle. So membership requirements on the HRC, our Palo Alto residency. On the Public Art Commission, members of the Public Art Commission either shall be members of the Architectural Review Board, or shall be professional visual artists, professional visual arts educators, visual arts scholars, visual arts collectors, whose authorities and skills are known and respected in the community, and wherever feasible, who have demonstrated an interest in and have participated in the arts program of the city. And lastly, on our Utilities Advisory Commission, each member of the commission shall be a utility customer, or the authorized representative of a utility customer, and six members of the commission shall at all times be residents of this city. For more information or to apply, can contact the city clerk's office at 329-2571, or visit the city Palo Alto's website. And that's all I have to report.
And I just want to make sure you mentioned the Main Library opening?
Well, I, but on Valentine's Day, this weekend, Saturday the 14th, Main Library, Rinconada Library, will have its opening. I apologize, I can't remember the exact time. I think it is 11 to 4 on Saturday, so everybody who can make it, be there. I don't know if you've been in the building yet. I think it's a... I think it's a beautiful historic renovation, and then the addition pieces, I think, fit in really well. And obviously, we've got a beautifully integrated campus now between the Arts Center and the Rinconada Library. Thanks.
Thank you, City Manager. And also, it was drawn to my attention here, under additions and deletions to the agenda, that the closed session at the end of the agenda has become, has been pulled by staff. Has been pulled by staff. We don't need to have a closed session at this time. So, this is where we go to oral communications. And we have six members of the public. You'll have three minutes. And our first speaker is Jerry Underhal, Underdahl, to be followed by Bob Moss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Jerry Underdahl. I live in Barron Park. And I wanted to come to speak a bit about affordable housing generally, and the Buena Vista Park in particular. And I understand that, you know, that you cannot take any actions at this point, but I just wanted to make a couple points here. There are legal and financial and political issues involved in affordable housing. And to the extent that the legal and financial issues can be resolved, I would call on the City Council to provide the political support for making this happen. As I understand it, in the city, there's already been considerable political will expressed. All three newspapers, local newspapers, have editorialized in favor of support of the residents in Buena Vista retaining a presence in the city. The City Council has expressed concern about this. The PTA Association has, Palo Alto's Forest Sensible Zoning has. A variety of organizations have come out and explicitly called, over the years, for support for this concept. So, to the extent possible, after we have the legal issue resolved, where we're going forward in April, I would hope that you would follow through on this. A couple comments that I'd make that distress me in saying kind of public discussion. One is, affordable housing is not possible in Palo Alto. We have heard this time and again in a number of contexts. Well, it is possible. We have hundreds and hundreds of families who have benefited from affordable housing that already exists in the city, which will continue to exist into the future because of actions taken by previous council people and organizations such as PAC, Eden Housing, and others. So, the question is whether there will be additional. Another is, I'm surprised by comments that come up sometimes to the effect that, well, you can't expect a right to live in Palo Alto. Of course not. That's not a relevant argument. No one has said that anybody has a right to live in Palo Alto. We know that it's a crapshoot to get a place to live in Palo Alto, even if you have plenty of money behind you. It's a matter of luck. But there also needs to be a chance for people to live here. And doing what we can to provide more affordable housing, because it can only be done with the assistance of government, increases the chances that somebody can live here. It's not a right, it's luck. Another point that I would like to make, excuse me, is that I would like organizations, individuals, to step forward and express their concerns for why they would oppose the will as expressed, so that we can have an open, responsible debate about this going forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Underdahl.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by Wen Gersich.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, and Councilmembers. I was going to talk about council length at the retreat last month, but I held off on one of the, hear your comments and the other comments in the community. And I've been thinking about it, and I thought maybe I'll give you some perspective. Several of you are saying you want to have council meetings end by 11 o'clock, and I think that'd be lovely. Back in the good old days, it was quite common for council meetings to run until 1:30, 2 o'clock, 2:30 in the morning. The latest I can recall being here was 3:45 in the morning. And I remember Mayor Kirk Comstock, back in '74, saying that at midnight, he turns into a pumpkin. And so, at midnight, he'd leave, and the vice mayor would take over. So, your meetings, even though they may seem long to you, are short compared to historical precedent. Why was that? Well, back in the good old days, when the council meetings were verbatim, I actually could determine who spoke how much, just by measuring the minutes, length of the minutes. About 15% of the time was taken up by the community, the public members speaking. About 20% was taken up by the staff, but some of that staff time, perhaps as much as five of that 20%, was answering questions and comments from the council. So, more than two-thirds of the meeting time was taken up by the council. And unfortunately, back in the good old days, there were some council members who rarely would read the council packet before the day of the council meeting. And so, they'd ask questions that clearly indicated that they didn't know what was in the packet and what was there. I remember one, I'm not going to name any names, but one council member would come in to the council meeting and open his packet for the first time. It was obvious he'd never even opened it. And we'd ask questions of the staff, and the staff would try to be polite and respond. And one staff member fairly got fed up, and he said, "That's on page one of the staff report, council member." So, let me make some suggestions on how to try to be more efficient. There's some of these things you're doing already, but I just wanted to emphasize them. One of them is, currently, the council packet is coming out well in advance of the council meeting. It used to be I'd get the council packet on Thursday, and Thursday night, I'd start calling council members about the hot topic, and they'd never have read the packet. So, I waited until Saturday, and I'd start calling council members, and almost none of them ever read the packet. So, finally, I'd start calling Sunday night, and then maybe half of them had read the packet. You have a lot more time to read the packet now, because it's coming out earlier. Read the packet early. If a question comes up, call or email the staff and get clarifications in advance. If they don't answer the question adequately to your liking, go back again. But try to find out in advance what's happening, and if you have any questions, try to get them resolved in advance, and the meetings will go much faster.
Thank you very much. Wen Gersich, to be followed by Omar Chaddie.
Hi, my name is Wen Gersich, and this last Saturday, I was in Oakland with the anti-frackers. And I was with Food and Water Watch, and it says, "Text Brown to 69866, tell Jerry Brown to brand fracking now." And if you don't know why, February 1, in The Chronicle, there was a news article by David Baker, and it says, "Oil waste pumped into state aquifers. Instead of the state allowing companies to drill more than 170 waste disposal wells," it says, "instead of banning fracking and all this," they said, "the state has allowed companies to drill more than 170 waste disposal wells into aquifers suitable for drinking and irrigation." And I met people that drove up from L.A. to be in this parade. And there was quite a few thousand people there, and it was a great parade, but we need millions. In New York, millions showed up, and the mayor of, the governor of New York banned fracking in New York, because he had to. In masses, we still have power. And if we want renewable energy, and he wants to be the climate change, you know, czar here in California, you know, why is he allowing this to happen? And why are we poisoning our drinking water and allowing these companies to use what's left of our fresh water to put 596 chemicals in it with sand and blast it into the ground to bring up this fracking and radiation? So, here's another thing, too. I'm going to show you a quick demonstration. This is fluoride. Well, pretend it's fluoride. This is, this is food coloring. Now, this is 16 ounces of water, and I did this at Boswell to show them about fluoride. Is that if this is a drop, and a drop of poison, is one drop in each glass. So, this is a pint, so there's two cups here. So, I'm going to put two. One, two. Okay? Now, if I shake that up, it's pretty blue, right? Now, if a baby drinks two eight-ounce bottles, that's how much, I should shake it each time to show you, that's how much poison they just drank, drinking two bottles. And as you continue to do this, if you think fluoride isn't poison, I did this with six, okay? I'm going to do two more, okay? Here's two more. Okay? One, two. Okay? So, this is if a baby drank four eight-ounce glasses of fluoridated water. Now, I just showed you the brain damage studies on children with the lead levels and the arsenic in the drinking water, and you have it on public record. So, I'm giving strict liability to this council to do something, because you can't pretend that you don't know it's on public record. This is something that they have nursery water with added fluoride after they filter it. Now, any mother that would give this to their child, this should be banned from the shelves. Any store that you go into, if you look at your receipt, there's a phone number at the bottom for Safeway, for Walmart, whatever. This is a dollar a gallon right now. And it says, "filtered baby water for babies with no teeth to drink poison." Go figure. So, this should be banned from the shelves, if it lowers children's IQs and poisons them, right? So, I would hope that everybody would call that number at the end of their receipt and get this banned.
Thank you very much. Omar Chaddie, to be followed by Hamilton Hitchens.
Thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it, especially with your calendar, but I need to bring you up to date on a few things. So, so far this year, three people have been killed by Caltrain on its tracks. I think most of them are suicides. That brings 215 since 1995, 255 since 2011. As you know, I'm an advocate for BART around the bay, which requires by law separation by grade, and I believe the cost to do BART and get a consensus to do BART along the peninsula will be very close to the $12 billion if you do grade separation, equal analysis with Caltrain. And it's also the third rail underneath, you don't have the ugly wires. So, anyway, I hope you look at that. So, I wanted to bring you new information. So, Dan Richard, CEO of High-Speed Rail, was interviewed on KCBS on January 11 in-depth, and he said that since the mid-1990s, the California High-Speed Rail Authority from Sacramento-based decided they were going to use the Caltrain tracks up this corridor. Now, I didn't know that, and most people don't know that. What that means is that these 215 people who have died, and the 55, and, you know, it's just collateral damage, and it's unfortunate, and I hope public officials will really look at that, and look at a process to see what we could do to close the 30-mile gap from Santa Clara, where it's coming eventually and down the peninsula. It's a 20-year program, so, you know, I'm not saying it's going to be a solution tomorrow. And then, I would ask you also to disclose, unless you've already done it, I haven't seen it, who, what the vote was when you guys had your closed session on electrification. You know, this council's had an issue with transparency. I think it's really important to know exactly who voted which way, so we can determine, start determining who may really be pro-high-speed rail, and all the things that come with it. Because when high-speed rail comes, it's, right now, they're not doing the grade separation, as you know, and you're trying to get. But more will die, because the train's going to be 40 miles an hour faster. So, we really need to go back to the mandate that the public gave you in 2008, which coincidentally was the same time we voted for high-speed rail, and then the council later changed. And that is, you guys had two-thirds vote, people voting to tax themselves again for BART. So, that makes 3/8 cents. So, you have a mandate for BART, and you guys need to look for it, and you need to move away from this 1864 trackway, and let's get advanced. I hope we can do it in the Caltrain corridor to save money, but maybe it has to be done elsewhere. Maybe grant, okay. So, those are the key things I wanted to, and, you know, horns may be irrelevant, but as I do Alma a lot of times during busy, and I drive on it, they do matter. And, you know, the two people that almost got killed in Burlingame about three weeks ago, you know, I don't know if horns helped or not, but they got out of the car in time before they were hit, the car was hit. You know, the Democrat activist that was killed here on Charleston or Meadow, I forgot. I don't know if a horn would have helped her. But there are just a lot of accidents that are going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hamilton Hitchens, to be followed by Rita Verhall.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Hamilton Hitchens. I moved to Palo Alto over 20 years ago while I was working in tech, and I plan to live here the rest of my life. And so, I really care about the livability of the city, 10, 20, even 30 years from now. I became alarmed at the large number of office buildings, glass and steel office buildings, sprouting up in downtown Palo Alto over the last few years, and even more so, the pipeline of projects that have been approved or are in the approval process. This is not a direction that I, nor many other residents in Palo Alto, would like to see the city go in. So, I would implore the City Council to limit the number of new office buildings being approved, and focus more for the downtown areas on trying to encourage multi-unit apartments or residencies. Secondly, please stop approving zoning exemptions. A perfect example of this is the 441 Page Mill project that was discussed, I believe it was at the last staff council meeting. While this project has some positive aspects and attributes, it would establish a precedence of granting a giant loophole for allowing developers of all kinds of zoning exemptions approved by overallocating project costs to the below-market units. The financial methodology chosen must be one selected by the city that accurately betrays the true incremental cost of the below-market housing units. The financial analysis I saw underestimated future revenue, inflated costs, and allocated substantial cost to the units that should not have been. Approving this project would significantly undercut zoning rules for future projects. I would like to see the city reject this project based on an accurate financial analysis and litigate if necessary. Thus, the decisions you make during the terms, your term, substantially affect the livability of Palo Alto over the next 10, 20, and 30 years. I hope you will slow office building development and encourage development of multi-unit housing in downtown areas that conform with zoning rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rita Verhall, to be followed by Paul Machado, who is our last speaker.
Hello, Mayor Holman and City Councilmembers. Well, everybody has said something that I was going to say before me. So, one of the things I wanted to start with was the Page Mill discussion that you had last week, or I think it was last week. Everybody did such a great job in my mind. Councilmember Phil Siff just pulled out all the $641 per square foot for below housing, below-market housing. And I think it was Councilmember Burt brought out the point that the attorney agreed to, that basically, anything that they asked, they expected you all to approve. And so, that brings me to what I really wanted to talk about. I read in Talk of the Town this last week that the City Council was looking for ways to shorten their City Council meetings. I feel personally that you need to take as much time as possible and as necessary on all items that are brought to the City Council. Having a personal experience with the Planning and Transportation Committee and the Architectural Review Board related to St. Elizabeth Seaton pre-kindergarten building a couple years ago, and the cell tower at the same site, I found that the Planning and Transportation Committee did not have the previous documents which the church had approved, and that only by threatening to obtain legal counsel was I able to slow the process down. This is a new board, which I think more closely reflects the viewpoints of many people in Palo Alto, and which the previous speaker just mentioned. I've gone to city or planning and transportation meetings lately that had nothing to do with me, and I'm appalled at some of the comments that the commissioners make, especially after people have made very good comments and brought to their attention reasonable concerns. One of the buildings is going up right now, next to the Birch Street condominiums. Those terraces will affect the residents of that area forever. So, please take your time, think carefully, as you are the final arbiter of many of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And our final speaker under oral communications is Paul Machado.
Good evening, Mayor Holman and Council. I was going to speak later this evening in support of office caps, but instead, I decided to come and return some city property that I found this morning when I was walking my dog. I live in Evergreen Park, and we have a parking problem. It is well-known to council... It is well-known to council. We've done parking counts, and one council member even drove out there and sent me an email and checked it out. I appreciate that. Some of you have talked about it. But the only thing that has really been done is the Public Works Department. Public Works Department does our street sweeping. They do it on Monday morning. Last night was very windy. I found this sign, which is usually posted on a tree quite far from where it was supposed to be. I think it's sad that this is 21st century technology for the city of Palo Alto. I mean, when I was a child, we used to put poles in the ground and signs on it that said, you know, street sweeping, it was much more effective. Maybe we should go back to the 20th century. I don't know. But anyway, I think this is, we need something. We don't even get our streets swept unless they put these up, and they put these up periodically on streets that aren't swept because there's always parking there. So my thought is, if we're only going to get our streets swept periodically, perhaps Evergreen Park should only pay their bills periodically. Seems logical to me. Anyway, I would like to return this, if I may.
Thank you. And that concludes oral communications. So our next item is consent calendar, and I have no cards for consent calendar, but city manager, item number 10.
Thank you. Would you like to do that now, Adam Mayor, before you vote or after you vote?
Before we vote, I think.
Okay, and with the council's indulgence, item number 10 has to do with the council's endorsement and approval of Rob DeGoyts. Rob, are you here? As Community Services Director. This is your last chance, or Rob's last chance, actually, but with the council's approval of Rob, you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and saying a few things?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, Jim. Thank you. And thank you, council members and Mayor Holman, assuming this passes. It's a real honor to be given this privilege and this responsibility, and so I want to thank you for that. I want to thank city manager Jim Keane and the executive leadership team, who've been really supportive and they're confident in me, so I want to thank them. And also wanted to say that I think the city of Palo Alto is a pretty great place. It's a great place to visit and work, but it's a really great place to live. And I think in part that's because of councils like yourself and many councils before you have invested consistently in community services, in parkland, in the arts, in recreation facilities, in human services, and those things that really give Palo Alto its sense of place. And it's a lot of reasons why people love this city. They really do, and it's because of things like what we do in community services. So, but that's because of councils like you that invest in that consistently. So, you know, it's a real honor and it's a privilege, and we're building from a really great foundation, so I look forward to working with you all on building community services to another level. And just lastly, I wanted to thank my wife, Allison. She's over here. I don't think she's ever been to the council chambers, and I've worked for the city 15 years. But a lot of us that work in public service, certainly the senior staff and elected officials, we've put a lot of time in, a lot of evenings, and we wouldn't be able to do it without really supportive partners. And for me, it's Allison, and so I wanted to thank her for that. Thank you.
Mayor, may I just say one other thing, and then Rob stay up there. So, I did just want to repeat, you know, we did a very involved recruitment for this position. We did a national search. We had candidates who had years of experience at the head of some very complex parks and recreation organizations, both in California and around the country. And we had a series of panel interviews that included most of the department directors on the executive leadership team at least twice. Rob actually did, gave one of the most historic interviews of all time, which is for another occasion. And we also had interviews with a community panel that included neighborhood reps and a lot of the commission representatives engaged with community services. And the, across all of those, probably 25 people who were involved in the interviews and in both categories, Rob came out, ranked the number-one person, best matched, most committed, and most capable of leading the organization forward in the future. And it's always a delight to sort of see such uniform agreement from a lot of different perspectives, and so I know Rob is going to serve his city very well. I turn him back over to you.
So I'm going to go out on a limb here and just suppose that your selection is probably widely popular, and I'll just offer my personal congratulations and thank you for your prior commitment, care, and service, and I look forward to the department under your guidance. So congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Holman.
And I see, I see a light by councilmember DeBois.
Different.
Okay, so, does anybody else?
Permission to speak?
Yeah, does anybody else have anything else to say to, yes?
Well, I'd just like to add my personal appreciation for the selection of Rob and in addition to all of the outstanding work he's done and the breadth of his various roles with the city, those who haven't been with us as long may not appreciate that when, and this is really an example of his dedication, when Project Safety Net was formed, Rob was co-chair, and basically that first year added those duties onto all of his other duties, and I'd be surprised if he was working much less than 80-hour weeks throughout that entire period, and it was simply out of just the dedication to the youth of our community that he did this. And that just exemplifies Rob's commitment to the community and to the people who live here. So, we look very much forward to you and your new role, and thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Burt.
Councilmember Scharf.
I'd just like to add my voice on, congratulations. You know, over the last five years I've been on the city council, I've been very impressed with the work you've done. And as councilmember Burt said, a lot of what I was going to say, I noticed with Project Safety, you did make that incredible commitment, and your commitment to our youth is really heartfelt, and that comes across, and it's very comforting to know how much you care. And it's that sense of how deeply you care that we really appreciate it. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, just to pile on the praise, I was at an event over the weekend and bumped into a school board member, and we had dozens of things to talk about, but the first thing she said was, "I'm so glad that Rob got chosen as director of Community Services." And she's been involved in, this board member's been involved in, you know, youth initiatives for quite a long time, and just spoke so glomingly and highly of you, and we're lucky, we're lucky to have you in the role, you know, that you've been serving for quite some time, and we're lucky that you were interested in stepping up. And I think, you know, if anybody were to question your intellect or political savviness, choosing this opportunity to praise your spouse and get some brownie points in exchange for the many long nights you're going to serve was smooth. So, well done.
Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Wobak.
Unlike councilmember Scharf, I haven't been here for five years on the dais. I've been here about five weeks. And in that short time, I've had the chance to be very impressed. A couple of weekends ago, Palo Alto had a very difficult weekend. During that weekend, a significant number of Palo Alto employees worked very hard to deal with some tragedies, to make sure the community was safe, to make sure that things were dealt with as they needed to be. Rob took the time on what was probably an insanely busy weekend for him to talk to me on the phone, to explain what the city was working on, what the city was doing, how it was working in collaboration with partners such as Palo Alto Unified, to make sure that those difficult challenges were addressed. And I really can't imagine anyone better for the job that you're taking on. And I will just warn you, we did just pick healthy cities, healthy communities as one of our priorities for this year, specifically identifying some of the services you'll be taking the lead on as a key priority. So, I hope we don't give you 80-hour weeks every week, but it's going to be busy, and I'm very glad that you're going to be our partner on staff for those.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Rob, you've heard a lot of praise about what you've done for youth in the city. I wanted to make sure that older people get a chance too.
Yeah.
As daily users of our parks and open space, I am continually impressed with how well-kept up they are and updated. I know you've done a lot of work on the golf course and creating a new course out there in the Baylands, and your work with the Parks and Rec Commission has been outstanding. So, looking forward to it.
Thank you, vice mayor.
Councilmember Phil Siff.
Well, first of all, congratulations to Rob, and I just want to direct a little bit of that to the city manager. I think one of the things that, the most important things that world-class organizations do is develop talent from within, and so I'm delighted to see, delighted to see Rob step up to do this, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well-stated. Thank you very much and congratulations. Councilmember DeBois.
My congratulations to Rob too. I just wanted to say I'm going to be voting no on item number seven.
Okay, so we have a motion to, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, moving.
Second.
So, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar by Vice Mayor Schmidt and a second by councilmember DeBois, and seeing whether to like, vote on the board. So that motion passes unanimously with councilmember Niss absent and councilmember DeBois registering a no vote on number seven. That takes us to our first action item, which is item number 11, Discussion and Direction to Staff Regarding Establishment of an Office R&amp;D Annual Growth Limit. And is the staff ready for your presentation? You will be in a moment. And while staff is preparing, could I ask anyone who wants to speak to this item to please turn in your card in the next, say, 10 minutes, so by 10 minutes to eight, and that will give us a good handle on how to manage the rest of the meeting. So I'd appreciate that very much. So if you want to speak to this item, turn in your cards, please, by 10 minutes to eight. Thank you. Hillary.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, council members. I'm Hillary Gittleman, the planning director, and we're here this evening for a work session on this idea of an annual limit. And I should say, the council's used to the terminology "study session." This is differentiated from a work session. That is different from a work session. In this case, we're seeking council direction. I don't know whether that will happen this evening or whether you'll continue tonight's discussion to a later date and provide that direction at that time, but traditionally in a study session, you do not conclude with a motion providing direction to staff, and in this case, we would like that to happen. But we do see it as a brainstorming session, a lot like a study session. And I'm going to start with about a 15-minute presentation. This slide shows the topics that will be addressed. The first thing I wanted to explain is that we really see this as part of the dual-track approach that the council articulated for the comprehensive plan update and some critical zoning questions that the council wanted to tackle concurrent with the comprehensive plan update. The ideas we're talking about today really have a place in both tracks. We think of the idea of growth management as very much a policy issue that has a place in the comprehensive plan update, but we think of a mechanism like a cap as something that has a place in zoning. So I think it's appropriate to discuss in both of those realms. The idea of an annual limit on office space really came up in the workshops we held last summer on the comprehensive plan update. We were discussing with the community a number of different approaches to growth management strategies, and particularly the absolute caps, the cap on development contained in the current comprehensive plan update. And the idea came up that what if, instead of actually capping the total amount of growth, instead we supplemented or replaced that with a strategy that would address the pace of growth? The idea would be to moderate the pace of development, in this case, office or R&amp;D development that generated job growth. And I want to give my thanks to Steve Levy for this graph that dramatically shows job growth in our region compared to the state and the US as a whole. First, we have some big-picture questions, and we raised these in the staff report. And I think it's important to frame this discussion by asking, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And I know new development is really the lever that we control at the city. That's where we have the most potential to affect change and growth and change in our community. But the question really is, if we moderate the pace of new development, will it effectively address the objectives? Addressing the growth in employment, the growth in traffic, the growth in parking demand? And that's one of the questions I hope the council will get to this evening. We've provided in the staff report some examples from other jurisdictions that have put this kind of pacing mechanism in place. San Francisco has a longstanding annual limit that was put in place by the voters, and the slide behind, the graph behind this slide is from a San Francisco presentation about their annual limit. Walnut Creek has a similar annual limit, although it's been a different mechanism for allocating space under the cap. And then Santa Monica has taken a different approach, based on the number of trips or VMT, vehicle miles traveled instead of square footage. Those are all explained more fully in the staff report. The staff report also provides two different data sets, and I wanted to thank Roland Rivera on my staff for doing a lot of work behind the scenes, not just to put these together when a presentation is needed, but to maintain these data sets over time. The first data set that we share in the staff report derives from the Comprehensive Plan Policy L8. This is the policy that establishes a citywide cap on non-residential development, and it has a couple of, or more than a couple disadvantages that we discuss in the staff report. Even though it's grounded in the comprehensive plan update, it really has institutionalized a legacy of a study that was done in 1989 by lumping together all non-residential space so it doesn't differentiate between retail, office, and other non-residential space. Also, it only looks at nine planning areas that were mapped in the comprehensive plan, so it's not really a citywide data set, although the nine planning areas do capture the vast majority of non-residential development. There are some exceptions. The other data set we've provided derived from the congestion management plan reporting requirement. Jurisdictions are required to report on a regular basis to the VTA employment numbers, and in this case, the non-residential numbers are broken, or I'm sorry, square footage numbers, the non-residential square footages are broken out by category, which is better. And this is for the city as a whole, again, which is better. The downside here is, of course, that it doesn't go back as far as the prior data set that goes all the way back to 1989. This data set goes back to 2001. And we'd be happy to take any questions you have on these two data sets. I probably won't be able to answer them on the fly here this evening, but I expect you'll have questions, and we'd be happy to come back to you with more detail. Obviously, there are other data sets out there that are not maintained by the city that the council can look to. We have some, produced some data related to the downtown cap, also a creature of the comprehensive plan. Then we've put out this existing conditions report in August of 2014. And then there are private industry reports related to jobs, rents, vacancies, and the council received some recent survey data, which is included in your packet this evening. It was submitted as a comment from some downtown businesses. So no matter what data you set you rely on, we think that the idea of establishing a pacing mechanism or an annual limit is actually quite complex, and there are a series of questions. If you establish that the idea of a limit could address your objectives in some fashion, then you, there are still a number of questions that have to be answered about exactly how this would work. And we've outlined in the staff report nine different questions, which I'll go through really quickly. You can read them here. First, obviously, the question, what should the limit be? And what data do you use to set it? What's the rationale? Then the second question is, what should the process and the criteria be for considering applications? We have two different models. The San Francisco model, where they've used a variety of different criter- We have two different models, the San Francisco model, where they've used a variety of different criteria over time, and the Walnut Creek model, where it's first-come, first-served. Third, should there be a geographic component to the program? In Walnut Creek, they exempt a business park that, where they're trying to stimulate employment. The fourth question, should some areas of the city or some types or sizes of projects be exempt? In San Francisco, they actually have two annual limits, one for small projects and one for large projects. The fifth question, should unused allocations roll forward for some period of time? Both San Francisco and Walnut Creek do allow allocations to roll forward as a hedge against very high or low spikes in economic activity. Then the sixth question, how would applications already in the pipeline be handled? And this is a particularly complex question, because property owners have applied for entitlements from the city based on the current set of rules and expect a fair playing field when they do so, and so we'd have to give some considerable thought to this particular question. The seventh question, how would the city ensure continued compliance with the Permit Streamlining Act? Again, for this one, we can point, we can draw on the experience of other jurisdictions. The eighth question, what changes would be needed to the comprehensive plan and to zoning to enact this kind of mechanism? And I think this is a complex question, again, that will take some thought after we understand exactly what, if any, of these concepts the council would like to pursue. And then finally, the ninth question is, what would be the potential impacts and benefits of the program, of a program like this? And again, I think, once we know if the council would like to proceed with any of these ideas and what ideas you would like to test, we can give you some sense of what it might take to assess the potential impacts and benefits of those ideas. So in the staff report, after discussing these questions, we lay out a couple of recommendations. There are two specifically. One related to hopefully getting the council input on some ideas that could be assessed as part of the comprehensive plan update. As I've indicated, we think this is kind of a complex set of questions, and our thought is that you'll probably want to kick the tires on a few different approaches and a few different ideas. We just put these numbers out there as a starting place, and I think we'll look forward to your input on that, based on the testimony we hear this evening and some of the data that we've provided. We also have a recommendation about, in the short term, if it's going to take some time to flesh out and enact a detailed program with a complicated pacing mechanism, cap of some kind, then we might want to consider whether there are interim measures that we might be able to enact on a more short-term basis. And we, again, like to hear the council's ideas about that, so that we can offer or come back to you with some ideas about what would be involved to assess the interim, as well as the long-term approach to these issues. So with that, that concludes our presentation. We're very eager to hear the comments from the public and from the council. We did get a number of written communications when this item was first on the agenda, January 26th, and then leading up to this evening's meeting. I know the council has copies of those communications. After we hear from the public, we'd be happy to answer your questions and hear council direction.
So one question is, would councilmembers find it helpful to have a copy of the presentation? And we don't have it, so if that could be provided, that would be great. And this would be a last call for anyone who wants to turn in a speaker card.
I'm sorry, Mayor Holman?
Yes.
The presentation is included in packet attachment C.
It's buried in the book. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And then again, last call for speaker cards on this item.
This is one of those instances where we prepared the presentation for the 26th, so it was already hard copy and into your packets.
Thank you very much. That's what that is. Okay. How many councilmembers have high-level questions that they want to ask, as opposed to going to comments later? So do you have questions? Councilmember Scharf seems to be the one with questions, so Councilmember Scharf?
I didn't realize I was the...
High-level questions.
I didn't realize I was the only one with high-level questions. Okay. So one of the questions you asked on the nine questions was, how do I put this? We're looking for, in terms, if it should be an interim, I have to collect my thoughts. If it should be an interim ordinance or whether or not it should be put into the comp plan? And I think that sort of is a dividing line of where you go on this. And then I was reading, actually, just a little while ago, because I didn't focus on it, was the EIR requirements. And it was a little unclear there, what that would mean in terms of, if you need an EIR to do an interim ordinance, I don't see how that works. So it seemed that any sort of caps or stuff on an interim basis don't work, you might as well just put them into the comprehensive plan process. But did I misread that? I wasn't sure how that intersects on the EIR issues.
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. It's actually really hard to identify the level of environmental review that would be required until we actually understand where the council wants to head on this. Our thought in putting together the presentation and the staff report was that you would want to consider potentially both things, a long-term strategy that could be analyzed as part of the comprehensive plan and discussed in the forum, in those forums with the community, and that might be something that we could fold into the comprehensive plan EIR and be dealt with that way, but that the council might also want to consider some interim measures. And you're right, it would be, it wouldn't be feasible to analyze some interim things that, in the course of our analysis, we determine would require a full EIR, but there may be things that the council would like to pursue on an interim basis for which a lesser level of environmental review would be required.
So as we proceed tonight, I guess my question is, are you going to identify for us? Or is that something you come back to us and say, well, if you want to do that, we've now analyzed it, and that looks like it's a lot of EIR review, or this does not require that much EIR review? I'm just wondering how we proceed if we want to do some interim measures, because I'm not sure what the point of doing an interim measure is, if it requires, you know, 18 months or 24 months. I mean, we're probably done with the comprehensive plan. We might as well do the comprehensive plan and not worry about the interim measures. And so I'm trying to figure out how we proceed without, it's sort of a chicken-and-the-egg thing, you know? So how should we proceed?
Well, thank you again, Councilmember Scharf. I think we put forward in our recommendation some things that fell into the two buckets, some things that we thought were long-term, that could be analyzed with the comprehensive plan update, and then some things that we thought were potentially short-term, that could be implemented with a lesser level of environmental review. To the extent the council wants to go in a different direction in either of those two buckets, we can try and, you know, we can tell you if our signal lights go off and we think that we're not going to be able to accomplish it tonight, or we can come back to you when we've had time to think about, more about what it is you're trying to achieve and the mechanisms you have in mind.
If I just might add, I think Hillary and Cara might be able to give you this initial signal. Again, I think we have targeted March 19th as the follow-up date for this discussion, just looking at the council's ongoing agenda, should you require a second? March 2nd?
I believe it's March 2nd.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. That was the other issue that needs to be carried for. Okay, March 2nd. So it very well may be that we'll want to regroup at the end of this evening and sort of see where the directives are, and it gives us, you know, at least the time between now and that next meeting to take a closer look at those EIR issues and report back then.
So Mayor Holman suggested early on this meeting that when we come back to comments, and I just make sure I understood, we're going to come back after the high-level questions. We're going to do comments and motions, or just comments and questions, or, I mean, I was unclear on that.
Okay. So thank you for the question. So do your high-level questions now, like you're doing exactly now. Then we'll go hear from the members of the public. We have now 14 cards. And then we'll come back and entertain either comments or motions, but what I was trying to avoid is coming back and getting a motion that's extensive and trying to cover a whole lot of things at, say, 9 o'clock or something of that nature. So if somebody wanted to make motions that ticked off certain specific things, then we could do that and try to accomplish as much as we could tonight. Or if we're not there, then we could come back the next time and make our motions then.
So I guess I wanted to get a sense of the motions, because a lot of the motion, and I'm sort of looking for a little help on this, seems that it should be explore and come back to us and tell us how this looks, as opposed to, you know, go do this, given the complicatedness here.
That could be the nature of the motion.
And so I was guessing if staff was looking for something like that, and what are, what really are, I guess, the parameters of what we should try and achieve tonight? I don't know if you had a thought on that, Hillary.
Thank you once again, Councilmember Scharf. I think you're absolutely right. To the extent that you can direct us to explore further some basic parameters or some ideas you have about how this issue might be addressed, that would be fantastic.
So you identified a few things for interim steps to basically slow the pace of development, I think, or at least to deal with the parking. And one of those was funding for a transportation management association. And I was confused as to, what I've heard previously was that we can't just impose fees, you know, Prop 218 issues and all of that. So I was, maybe you could explain how that would work, given the limitations of where we are. I mean, I'd be very interested in understanding how we could do that, because that deals with a major issue of traffic.
Thank you. This is an example of something that we could, of course, come back and provide more detail on, but we would have to do a nexus analysis to determine the relationship between the new development that we were trying to slow the pace of and the impacts that would be addressed by this approach. So there would be some analysis involved, and we could come back and explore with you exactly what that looked like and how long that might take, if this was an idea that had some traction with the council.
And then things like a temporary reduction of allowable office densities. You wouldn't need an EIR for that, or is that something you would come back to us and say, well, I guess it depends on how big a temporary reduction is. Is that the issue, or how does that work?
I think our feeling was, in this case, that it's probably something we could do without an EIR, but again, the council would have to help us flesh that out a little more, and we reserve the right to give that some more thought and come back to you with more detailed analysis.
And an interim measure, by definition, are we saying to ourselves interim measure is until we finish the comp plan? Is that, and that would be the end of the interim, right? Is that what everyone's thinking, or is it something different?
That's generally what we were thinking in structuring it this way, yes.
All right. And then the question that you ask is, what are the objectives that we're trying to achieve with this? I noticed that staff doesn't really give any. So why are we doing this from staff's perspective? And what is the objective?
I think in the staff report, we posit that the idea of pacing new development relates to this perception in the community that traffic and parking demand and development in general has gone on, has become much faster and more severe. The impacts have been more severe in this post-recession economic period than they had been in the past. And the question is whether, and this is what we posed in the staff report and in the presentation, whether metering the pace of new development would address those underlying perceptions and concerns in the community. As I think we point out in the staff report, employment densities and the use of existing building space has really been pointed to by many, many people as the primary driver of the traffic we're seeing. But the new space, the new development that's happening, is the lever that we at the city control. It's hard to regulate densities. In fact, we haven't thought of a way to regulate employment densities in existing building space. But in new space, it is possible to regulate parking, traffic, employment, the amount of square footage, et cetera. And so the question we're posing for the council is, is this idea worthy of consideration, given the objectives that we understand, were articulated, or concerns we understood were articulated by the community?
Did you see other objectives articulated by the community, other than traffic and parking?
I think it's primarily traffic and parking and just the pace of development. People see new buildings being approved and constructed.
So have we heard from different areas? I mean, I've heard a lot about the pace of development, frankly, on California Avenue and downtown. I actually don't think I've heard it, maybe a little bit on El Camino, but not really. I haven't heard it all on the Research Park. And the question is, have you heard it in other parts of the city, or is that really the focus areas that you've heard it in?
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. I think we've heard it about downtown and California Avenue and the El Camino corridor.
Councilmember Scharf?
Yeah.
We have three more councilmembers who have questions, so if there is something that you have burning, you can come back.
Okay, as long as I can come back to it later and ask some more questions, I'm happy to move on.
If that's what you need to do. Councilmember Burt.
Under alternative 1B that was posited by staff, it's talking about slowing the pace of office/R&amp;D development by imposing more robust impact fee program. And this is the first I'm aware of a notion that what would be increases in impact fees that must be supported under Prop 218, that it really is, the fees are directly related to the impacts of the new projects, that those might be significant enough to move the dial at all on the pace of new development. So what's the basis for the notion that that might have a meaningful impact on the pace of development?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. I think we believe that it would be possible to construct a nexus that would allow the city to increase by quite a bit some of the impact fees that currently exist. Now, until we do the study, we couldn't test that idea with any specificity, but it is typical in preparing nexus studies that you develop a nexus for a much higher rate than you actually can politically accommodate in terms of setting fees. So I don't think it would be surprising to do a nexus study and find that there's a higher level of fee that we could charge in some of the categories where we already charge impact fees, for transportation and housing, for example.
So I'm trying to recall specifically, but we, in the latter part of last year, had an update on our impact fees. And at that time, the consultant had not indicated that we had a great deal of latitude remaining on what we could have as increases in our impact fees. So I'm hearing kind of two different possibilities here, between what the consultant had said and what you've just suggested.
If I understand, that scope of work was limited to the sort of existing arena of anticipated infrastructure improvements. There's an opportunity in the comprehensive plan update, and that's why this is in the longer-term category, to identify additional capital improvements that we might be able to fund through impact fees. And in addition, we're taking a look right now at our housing impact fees, which were not the subject of that earlier study, and there may be an opportunity, as a result of that analysis, to increase those fees, to the extent where they begin to affect the cost of development.
So how would we get enough information about what amount of increases there might be and how that might affect the pace of development in order for us to make a policy decision on adopting that as one of our measures to control pace of development versus the other measures that we had been considering?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Burt. Again, we're not thinking that the council's going to make a decision on any one of these mechanisms this evening. We're simply interested in which of these the council believes would be worthy of exploring further. If the council's interested in this strategy that would affect the pace of development by affecting the cost of development, then we could pursue this further. As I mentioned, we already have a nexus study for housing impact fees in the works. We could bring that back to you, hopefully, within the next few months and bring... you, hopefully within the next few months, and, and bring more specificity to this measure.
Okay. So my next question is somewhat a follow-on to Councilmember Sharf's question about what other benefits we've, or what other problems we've heard are existing in the community resulting from development, and how might those problems be addressed through a cap or other means? And a cap presumably resulting in some sort of a competition among projects for the projects addressing those concerns or objectives the best would, through some kind of scoring system, be selected. And the other areas that I know have been spoken about in the community extensively include the architectural quality, so that design aspect. And then I think other public benefits and included in that are whether we have historically had to look at PCs or zoning bonuses in order to get certain benefits, whether it's a widening of an intersection or a pedestrian improvement at a given location outside of a new development or something like that. So had, are those not things that you had heard in the community and, and I had been assuming would be part of the, what would be potentially included in cap project selection criteria?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Burt. I think in the spirit of brainstorming, it's great to have these ideas brought forward. We had not jumped to the conclusion that it would be a competitive process. That was one of the questions we had for the council. But I think if it is a competitive process, we would have the opportunity to make sure the projects that are selected are of the highest quality, and potentially to talk about the public benefits of one versus the other. So those are valid points, and I agree with you, those are, those could go on the list of concerns, community concerns that could be addressed, depending on how we structure this program.
Okay. And then on the issue of whether an EIR would have to go along with an interim ordinance, I was confused because I had reread the December 8th packet, which on page two, the top half, addressed this issue. And if I understood that, this is page 755 of our packet, if I understood that correctly, it was indicating that interim ordinances have a good potential to not require environmental review that permanent ordinances would. And am I misunderstanding that?
Thank you.
Why don't I add to that, Cara Silverstein, your Assistant City Attorney. In general, there certainly is, is more of an ability to adopt an interim ordinance, say, a 12- to 18-month ordinance with outdoing environmental review on the premise that you're really not changing the existing environment that much, that it takes a lot longer than a 12- to 18-month to, for a full-scale project to come online. And so you're really not changing the physical environment. So that's really the basis of our analysis, that interim ordinances, provided they're a short duration, generally don't require a full EIR.
And, and that staff report actually referred to up to two years. And that mattered to me because if we're thinking that the comp plan process will take approximately that amount of time, then we'd have, prospectively, a good alignment between the length of time that we could have an interim ordinance and when we'd have the permanent measure online. So is that up to two years, correct?
You know, there's, there's no specific time period in the statute, but that's along the same lines as our thinking.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Burt. Okay, Councilmember Wobak. Again, high-level questions, please.
I've actually got some comments I just want to share. There might be some questions coming out of this, but I just want to share these, just to kind of frame where I'm coming from.
If they're questions, truly questions. Comments are later, to be fair to everybody else.
All right. I'll hold my comments then.
Okay. Councilmember Berman?
So following up on Councilmember Burt's comments on packet page 755, I noticed that an interim ordinance of a hard cap is, is one of multiple interim measures that we might decide to take, depending on where the council goes. But the staff report says that to enact an interim ordinance, a four-fifth vote, so eight votes, would be required, and the city council would have to make legislative findings that there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the approval of additional development would result in that threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Would result in, I'm assuming that's result in increasing that threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Is there an idea for what that bar is? I mean, what would be considered is, what level, I guess, of additional traffic or parking impact could be considered a threat to public health, safety, or welfare? Is there any precedent for, for that?
Yes, thank you. In terms of the interim ordinance, definition of health and safety threat, the bar is fairly deferential to the legislators. And so if you certainly, you know, severe parking impacts and, and traffic impacts and that type of thing, the courts have found that to be a sufficient finding.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Would you have a sense, Cara, that an interim ordinance applied in conjunction with parallel efforts by the governing body, say, in a form of a comprehensive plan, to be moving towards some sort of long-term decision, could not possibly, again, aid how the interim ordinance would be looked at, that clearly it was interim but because of the other actions that the governing body was taking as opposed to just doing one thing and just walking away?
Yes, exactly. That, that, that's definitely true. And, and there are two different statutory schemes for interim ordinances. One is just the city council's ability to adopt interim ordinances, in which case generally there is a timeframe that, that the council would specify. Then there's another legislative scheme, which we refer to as moratorium, that is sometimes similar to interim ordinances. And in, in that scheme, there are more specific statutory requirements where the, the council can only impose a moratorium for a maximum of two years. And in that, in those cases, the courts do look very closely at, at the time period and the context of, of the other actions that are, that the city is taking in connection with general plan updates.
Councilmember Devois, you had a question?
Yeah, two quick questions. So we're hearing a lot of concerns about basement conversion to office, and also thinking through this, you know, if you think about new development that was developed as retail and then asked to convert to office, what are the kinds of protections we could put in place for retail in those kinds of situations?
Well, I think the protections for retail is probably a whole, whole other subject that we could, we could talk about at length. But if I understand where you're heading, and this came up in response to some questions you posed before the meeting on the 26th, there has been this idea that the city could introduce either on an interim basis or a long-term basis, a requirement for a conditional use permit for office development. Many, many jurisdictions do that. If you were to impose a requirement for a use permit for office development, then there potentially would be the potential to impose conditions related to office employment densities.
So you actually answered my next question. But, I mean, so things like basement conversion, that would also be a conditional use permit?
Well, if there were, I'm not speaking to basements specifically, but if there were a conversion from one land use category to another land use category, if that new land use category required a use permit, it would have to go through that process, and you could impose conditions.
Okay. And so thinking about interim ordinances tied to the intensity of use of existing buildings, can we enforce a new occupational permit when a new tenant moves into a building? You know, what happens kind of with these existing buildings?
You know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to analyze that in some detail. We have not, at this point, found an easy way to do that, to impose a new requirement on tenancy rather than on use. Zoning is generally around land uses, not tenancies.
And could fire code be used in some cases?
Pardon me?
Could, could the fire code be used in some cases?
You know, we'll have to look into all of those issues in more detail.
Okay, with that, we will go to the public. We have 14 speakers, and you'll be given two minutes each, please. The first speaker is Stephen Baker, to be followed by Tiffany Grego.
Councilmember Holman, this is really an important issue. Don't you think they should have three minutes? I mean, I mean, it's only an extra savings of 13 minutes or 14 minutes.
We are going to have another meeting on this topic.
Yeah, but they come and sit through the meeting. I, I mean, I've heard you many times make that same argument yourself. I, I don't understand.
Okay, I've heard both things from members of the, of the council up here. So, okay, three members, three meaning, excuse me, three minutes per speaker. First speaker is Stephen Baker.
Could I ask a process question? Could we then add 20 minutes to the 9:15 ending?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're doing pretty well so far. Stephen Baker is the first speaker. And if the next speaker, when your name is called, if you'd come to the front, that would be helpful. Tiffany Grego.
Hi. So sorry, was it two minutes or three minutes?
Three, three minutes.
Okay. So I wanted to say thanks for the opportunity to speak today. There's a, kind of a joke called a first-world problem. This is a problem that results from wealth and that appears trivial when compared to true suffering. So for example, last week I was at Starbucks, and the Wi-Fi was so slow, I became enraged that I couldn't complain on Twitter about it. It's a first-world problem. So I'm from the Midwest. My brother lives in a rust belt city, and I've smelled, actually, the dank inside of black mold-filled buildings in that city. I've seen literally collapsing structures in these abandoned cities. My brother's city unfortunately has very few jobs, and he's currently unemployed. And I think a lot of Americans are unemployed. And so one thing I think is interesting about this proposal is that it tries to limit job growth because apparently Palo Alto has too many jobs, too much development. So I would like to coin a new phrase. I call this problem a Palo Alto problem. We live in a wonderful city, and I, I understand that office growth does cause real harm. In my opinion, we should address that harm with impact fees, creating transportation demand management, or more public transit. I do not think we should simply cap office growth. I worry that the views of people like me are underrepresented here. I have small children who I'm missing spending time with tonight, and I actually had to argue with my wife about whether it was worth my time to come here and speak. I'm a homeowner in Midtown, and I am representing the views of at least six other Palo Altons who I've spoken to about this issue and feel similarly. I wanted to say that we moved to Palo Alto because it is a vibrant, small city. And like many of you, we like the walkable neighborhoods, the shopping, the restaurants, and the great schools. However, we also moved here because even though it's a small city, it's a metropolis of tech. I'm a tech worker. Many of the world's biggest tech companies started right here, and I think we should be very proud of that. And I believe that most of those companies greatly benefit the world as well as the regional economy. And so there are two reasons why I'm pro-growth. Altruistically, I'd hate for the future world-changing industries to not be located here. I think there's magic here. It's hard to replicate. But secondly, I live and work here. Selfishly, I want future jobs to be located near me, so that I can potentially work at those new companies without moving my family. It worries me to see startups leaving Palo Alto. It really upsets me that my representatives don't seem to want them here. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Grego, to be followed by Whitney McNair.
Good evening. Tiffany Grego, I am responsible for the Stanford Research Park for Stanford University. As partners in perpetuity with shared heritage and shared interests, Palo Alto and Stanford have made the Research Park an extremely unique place. Palo Alto is the nexus for research, discovery, and innovation by companies like Tesla, Theranos, Merck, Varian Medical, HP, Nest, and SAP, to name a few. They make the Research Park an exceptional Palo Alto asset and the envy of many cities around the world. The Research Park is the world's first, and countless other cities use the Research Park as a model to stimulate economic growth in their communities. I share with the many tour groups who come to meet with me that our tools for success include our longstanding zoning, predictable city process, common set of standards for development in the Research Park, and a spirit of partnership we share with the city. I'd also like to share some quotes from a recent survey of Research Park tenants. One said to me, "Innovative startup companies want to locate in the Research Park because we are lulled by the parcel sizes and square footage that allows us room to mature here and the certainty that we can do so." Another said, "The ability for a company to plan for its future growth is the trump card over the competition." And finally, "Palo Alto and Stanford do a good job balancing the bucolic open field of the park while allowing for growth and change. I am concerned that the proposed cap will have unintended consequences that will compromise our mutual ability to attract companies that create long-term economic viability for our city." Together the city and Stanford have been nimble, flexible, and strategic in attracting some, many exciting success stories in recent years. Take one as an example. In 2007, when Stanford recruited Theranos, a startup healthcare company, their CEO said they could only locate in the Research Park if we could accommodate their path for growth within a few short years. After relocating Theranos twice in existing buildings, today Theranos is in its new headquarters on Page Mill, in which 47,000 square feet was added under current zoning. I am concerned that the proposed cap is too sharp of a tool and will cause companies like Theranos to become lost opportunities for Palo Alto and for Stanford. This evening, you have received letters from HP, Varian Medical, and SAP, expressing that they also desire to preserve the certainty and predictability that the current Research Park zoning affords them. Research Park companies are also interested in corporate social responsibility and are willing to mitigate any negative impacts that their growth may bring. The city and Stanford have built the Research Park together, and we share the benefits and the challenges of prosperity. However, before you take action, I do urge you to spend the time to better understand the driving forces behind the success of the Research Park and why companies choose to locate here. We can then be better prepared to build consensus around how we can ease the pressure on our community that is born out of this success, including investing in a robust TDM program for the Research Park. We look forward to being part of a productive effort that also preserves our economic vitality. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Whitney McNair, to be followed by David Venata.
Good evening, Mayor Holman, and members of the council. My name is Whitney McNair, and I'm Senior Associate Director of Land Use and Environmental Planning at Stanford University. I've been participating in the comprehensive plan update, including providing data and information about Stanford lands and existing conditions. Palo Alto's comprehensive plan update process is set up to try and build consensus, including engaging with many different constituents, as well as Stanford University, for a positive mutually beneficial outcome. I'm concerned that this effort to implement interim measures or even permanent zoning changes is rushed and without proper supporting analysis, including environmental and fiscal analyses. A quick and rushed effort here could lead to a cure worse than the disease. The issues facing the downtown may not be the same as those facing the Research Park, and so the solutions may need to be different as well. A one-size-fits-all approach would be ill-advised. There's a comprehensive approach being taken right now for the study of the downtown cap, and we hope that the same level is done before considering another cap citywide. There are other tools to address traffic than an annual office cap. Stanford Research Park has an established TDM program that was approved by the council in 2005 as part of the Mayfield Development Agreement. The TDM framework includes SOV rates, a TDM coordinator, transit subsidy program, multiple shuttles throughout the Research Park during all hours, and a guaranteed ride-home program. In addition, several lessees also run their own TDM programs tailored to their employees' needs. We are consistently and constantly focusing on how to improve our TDM offerings to optimize our efforts. This would be an area where great consensus could be built for Stanford and its lessees if they were engaged in a collaborative process. Another tool is the existing Stanford Research Park traffic impact fee. This is an $11 per square foot fee that's put on new office development in the Research Park. There's over $3 million in that fund that could be put to you. There's over three million dollars in that fund that could be put to use, other than just the slated target, which is improving intersections, but it could be put to both bike and pet improvements, and Stanford would support using those fees in other ways. There's another tool in that the city could engage with Stanford to leverage the Research Park, to rally around regional issues, such as trying to get the Caltrain station at Cal Ave as a bullet stop. So, these are just some tools you might want to consider, other than going in the route of the cap, and we believe the blunt, one-size-fits-all office cap isn't the right approach. Thank you.
And thank you. David Vanata, to be followed by Jean McCowan.
Mayor and city council members, I'm David Vanata. I am an attorney in Palo Alto at 525 University Avenue, and I've had a lengthy, over twenty-five years of experience of working with property owners and tenants in commercial properties in Palo Alto. We're talking about growth management, and I think we're talking about the impacts that this will have if we adopt growth management amongst property owners and tenants and businesses and other stakeholders in this town. We've heard a lot about traffic issues, we've heard a lot about parking issues, and we've heard a lot about that being focused on, particularly the downtown and particularly California Avenue, and we'll probably hear more and more about it over the months and months and months. But I don't know, and I don't see any evidence, that a cap in and of itself is gonna lead to resolution of the problems. As I think your staff report pointed out, and you should look at that staff report in detail, it is extremely well-done and lays out the complexity of what you're dealing with. This is a complex problem, leading to going down a road which could, some might call a slippery slope, or some might call a barrier to the success of this city. And we need to be really concerned about what we're doing here and do it in the right way, not in a rush way, as other speakers have spoken. We have to deal with what we already have in place. We have a lengthy, detailed, and somewhat complicated development program. I've seen in the newspapers and the like lots of people talking about, well, this city isn't strong enough in protecting the development heritage of this city. But I've been here for a long time, seeing how hard people work to protect the city, the council members, and your staff, and I think sometimes we are throwing the baby out with the bath. We should first determine what the problem is, and then, once you determine what the problem is, decide how to resolve it with good, workable, and fair solutions. We have to look at the consequences, intended and unintended, on property owners' rights and values and the city's economy, and as one of the previous speakers talked about, the potential for jobs and future jobs in this city. Look at that list that was given as the nine points, and look at some of the problems that we have to look at in adopting anything like a cap. For instance, how will such an annual cap be fairly, fairly applied? What properties would be selected under some kind of mechanism under the cap? How are we gonna use a process? I've seen the San Francisco process. I haven't seen the Walnut Creek process, but the Walnut Creek process was actually taken to court once. We want to make sure we're doing something that makes sense. What standards will be adopted in the applications? These so-called beauty contests, are these just gonna be used as levers for, you know, basically buying up better and better and better in somebody's mind as to what is a better application? How extensive an application we're gonna have to go through to know that we're even on the list? So, you've got five projects or ten projects that are all gonna be competing with each other, perhaps. What are we gonna be looking for, and how much detail are we gonna have to give to, and you just get on the list? So, and the geographics that have to be considered. So, take a look at the nine points and realize the difficulties that you're gonna have in trying to adopt a meaningful and fair ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jean McCowan, to be followed by Norman Beamer.
Good evening, Mayor Holman, council members. Jean McCowan, Stanford University. I wish I wasn't repeating a lot of things others have said, but that's the truth. We're all kind of thinking about this in a similar way. I'd encourage you not to take precipitous actions on things like development caps or interim measures on a citywide basis without spending the time upfront to define what problems you're trying to solve and how those may differ, and the solutions may differ depending on different parts of the business districts in the city. I speak from personal experience as a participant in a previous time of concern about growth, traffic, and jobs/housing imbalance in the mid-1980s. The downtown cap in 1985 and the 1989 Citywide Land Use and Transportation Study limit were adopted not with just a brief conversation, but rather after a substantive and effective engagement by the city with its residents, landowners, and businesses. It's notable that twenty-six years later, the downtown cap has not been reached, and less than half of the citywide limit has been used. I believe that planning effort achieved its intended effect, which was to provide a stable and predictable platform to manage future development. Whether you agree those measures have worked the way we would like them to or have served us well now, I hope you will pursue a similar process of thoughtful consideration and consultation with all the affected interests. You've seen in our letter, and you've heard from Tiffany Grego, our particular focus on the Research Park. Development caps and other mechanisms need to be designed to fit the problem. For example, there is a community concern about parking near the downtown commercial areas, but that is not really an issue in the Research Park where properties do provide their required parking. Another example is the Research Park has not employed planned community zones, but has developed over the last many decades within the limits of zoning, which has provided the confidence and certainty that has allowed the evolution of existing companies and new ones to be accommodated. That stability of the city's longstanding commitment to this zoning, with a very restrictive floor area ratio and a very finite amount of additional capacity, has been a key strength in the support of the Research Park and has led to the retention of companies like Hewlett-Packard, Varian, and Lockheed, and the ability to attract newcomers. Please take the time to do the proper research, including engagement with valued businesses in the Research Park and in the community in general, with our residents, with our landowners. Please avoid hasty steps that could inadvertently and unnecessarily endanger this important part of our community. Thank you.
And thank you for coming. Norm Beamer, to be followed by Bob Moss.
In my opinion, Palo Alto doesn't need a single new office. We have enough office space to last us for the rest of our lives. And now, I'm certainly not proposing that we put an absolute ban on offices, but that should be the underlying theme of your deliberations. You don't need any more offices. There's plenty of folks out there who would love to, to have offices in Palo Alto, and that's a tremendous compliment to Palo Alto. But Palo Alto as a city does not need any more offices. So, in formulating your policies, you should certainly demand transportation demand management, adequate parking, not make any exceptions whatsoever to current zoning, and impose development fees and everything else to discourage development. I, I just don't understand why we need more offices. I understand why people would love to have offices here, but our office-to-housing ratio is, is one of the highest in the world, and so, it's just common sense. We don't really need more office space here.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by Herb Borack.
Thank you, Mayor Holman and council members. A couple of points I think we should keep in mind. First of all, the offices we already have are gonna increase density over time. A number of people have pointed out, I've been pointing out for years, that the average space per office worker has been decreasing for years, and it's gonna continue to decrease. So, this is gonna cause problems we're all aware of: traffic, parking, jobs, housing imbalance. We're gonna have that even if not one more square foot of office is built. That doesn't mean we should ignore the fact that allowing additional office space is gonna cause problems also. Second thing that people are overlooking is that offices cost the city money. Every thousand square feet of office costs the city approximately twenty-five hundred dollars per year, more for services than it pays in taxes. So, there's an actual financial cost to the city for having and building more offices. So, how do we approach this? Well, I suggest there are a number of ways, because there's a number of problems. Oh, another problem, of course, is follow the money. Office rents are the highest for any use. So, if a property owner has the options of how he's going to use his retail space, is it going to be for retail or office, and he has the option of transferring it over to office, he'll make more money, and we lose retail, which is bad. And in fact, we've been losing retail over the last five, ten years. So, one approach we should be taking is putting in a retail-only requirement in the existing retail spaces, so you can't convert into offices, period. Second, if somebody wants to build office space, and it's more than is allowed, let's say we put in a fifty thousand square foot annual limit, and somebody comes in with a marvelous project that's seventy thousand square feet. If they can prove that they are gonna have less traffic by some means, TDM or whatever, and they actually follow through, then they can be allowed to build more space. On the other hand, if they say they're going to reduce traffic and they fail, there should be penalties. And so, we have to have an offsetting, let's call it a bonus if you do well and a penalty if you do badly. Now, getting the details, of course, is not gonna be easy, but I think the concept is important and something we should be looking at. Finally, we should be looking at encouraging the kind of broadband services that encourage people to work from home and not from offices, so you eliminate the traffic and parking problems. So, all of these things have to be taken together. You're not gonna be able to solve the problem by doing just this or just that. It's a complex problem, and it's gonna take a lot of ways of fixing it, and we're gonna have to work on it very hard.
Thank you very much. Herb Borack, to be followed by Rita Verhaal.
Mayor Holman and council members, I believe the previous two speakers made some very good comments. I was concerned I was going to be constrained for time when the city manager and the council decided to speak about a consent item, rather than removing it from the consent calendar on item number ten. Previous department head appointments that you want to have conversations about were placed on what's now called an action agenda. If someone wants to put something on the consent calendar, then there's no debate, and we wouldn't be worrying about squeezing the time for the public on this item from three minutes to two minutes, because you would've put that item taken off the consent calendar at the end of the agenda. In regard to what happened in the 1980s, one thing is that conditions have changed. Yes, the council set a limit on office space in downtown, but it was based on the conditions that existed at that time, and we've seen changed conditions which have intensified use. So, there's a reason to make a change. In regard to the 1989 Citywide Land Use and Transportation Study, it was a long process, and the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to have separate limits on development in each of the nine areas. And my recollection is that it was during the comprehensive plan approval by the city council that Councilmember Rosenbaum proposed that we just aggregated and have a single citywide limit. Staff over the years, in the past, had maintained on a regular basis how much increase there was in each of those nine areas in any case, so that you could look at them individually. Clearly, you can look at those areas separately, and one way to not look at them separately is to get a staff report that says, "Look at them all together." It's clear that there are some areas of town that are impinging on neighborhoods that do need action, and that there are others that are not. Now, it may be that if you put constraints on annual growth downtown in California Avenue, all those offices that would've located there will end up in the Research Park, which will be another good thing for Stanford. But I, but I think that you should look at each area separately to see what kinds of limits are needed there. And if downtown can meet its cap in three or four years, and it's already going too fast, maybe the limit that it would need is smaller than a third or a quarter of the remaining space. Thank you.
And thank you. Rita Verhaal, to be followed by William McGray.
I definitely support an annual limit on office in research and development space. When I speak with neighbors or other people in Palo Alto, I think what I, well, what I hear is that people are upset about the amount of development, because they feel that exemptions are being made for each building that is going up. Required parking is no longer, or sufficient parking is no longer required. Buildings have exemptions as to their height or their setbacks. Also, the zoning laws have been changed for different projects. The park at the Alma Development, where Lucky's used to be, and Grocery Outlet is now, is approximately, what, ten feet wide, and that would not usually be considered a park. I think what people want is a level, fair, playing field. Mr. Hannah spoke about consistency, and I believe that is what the residents of Palo Alto want. I've lived here for thirty years, I've paid my taxes. I go downtown, and yes, it seems like every week there's a new building going up. Maybe a two-year moratorium on all new office and research and development projects would provide the, a level playing field and the consistency which Mr. Hannah and the Research Park individuals are requesting.
And thank you. William McGray, to be followed by Cheryl Lilienstein.
Good evening. Thanks for taking the time and the extra minute to listen to our thoughts. I live in Palo Alto and I work downtown. I'm not a fan of traffic, and I've spent plenty of time downtown circling blocks looking for parking spots. These are big problems, and we should solve them. They're also indicative of another problem, a jobs/housing imbalance, which a few people have already mentioned. I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not a Realtor, I'm not a policymaker, and so I can't tell you what the best solution is here. I've already heard about a half dozen between reading the comments on this and listening to people just now that I think sound really promising. But a flat cap on development just doesn't sound like the best one. We should use office development as a bargaining chip, through which we can get the housing, transportation, and other changes that we need. And we shouldn't assume that desks cause traffic or take up parking spaces. We need more data here, but anecdotally, I know that my bike doesn't use a parking spot, and my colleagues at Caltrain Inn aren't causing any traffic. If we wanna fix parking, let's make policies about parking. If we wanna fix traffic, let's make policies about trips. If we wanna fix jobs/housing imbalance, let's make policies about that balance. But please, don't force away people like me who have dreamed of coming to Silicon Valley our whole lives because this problem is complex, or challenging, or because it's scared or angered a few people. Thanks.
And thank you. Cheryl Lilienstein, to be followed by Dan Garber.
Good evening, everybody. I have heard some phrases which I would like to repeat. One is ease the pressure. One is bargaining chips. And another is Caltrain is not causing traffic. So, my point is that Caltrain not being trenched is causing traffic, and that it's been a longstanding problem that has only amplified as the office space and office, the development of the city has gone from a slow pace to a very quick pace. So, this is a longstanding problem, and I have a very wise and retired friend who years ago was our city's transportation planner. And I asked him, "What's the story here? You of all people know the city intimately. Is there any hope of improving traffic in the city?" And what he said was two words that I invite you to imagine, but paraphrased, said, "No." And the reason was because we encourage an ever-increasing population without the possibility of commensurate improvements in transit, because Caltrain bisects the city. And at this point, as Caltrain expects to increase the number of trips and the number of trains, it's going to further block flow across the city. So, while I understand that people who are invested their lives, their livelihoods, their futures, in growing their very important and influential businesses that are known worldwide, we in, who live here, have to deal with the ever-increasing traffic and the problems that trying- that trying to deal with Caltrain has done. So I'm wondering, coming back to the bargaining chip issue, I would like to see the city stop office-based development and ask everyone who's interested in office-based development to put pressure on Caltrain to trench the tracks. And then let's talk about, does what you have planned increase the flow or is there still problems with transport across the city? Because we simply don't have the capacity to live here comfortably as more and more people flow in every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Garber to be followed by Nielsen Buchanan.
Dan Garber, resident and small business owner. The city needs to focus on cars and their traffic and parking impacts and not on capping office and R&amp;D development or creating limits that meter that development. While I do believe that this issue merits discussion and debate, I do not support these strategies being pursued as the primary or even secondary solutions to a problem that has no definition. Square footage is a terribly blunt tool to manage impacts in communities that have been built out. Examples of small spaces having large localized parking impacts abound. Large places of employment can have low impacts, especially with her in walking and biking distance of train and bus routes and actively managed by TDM programs. Further, the impact of development on traffic is, as a result of development, is minuscule compared to the impacts of forecast population growth in the Bay and the impacts that that will have on our parking and our traffic. Simply and blithely limiting square footage is a tendency of looking for those for easy fixes and to score political points. To use Bob Moss's language, "This is dumb and a waste of time, a waste of our staff's time." Slowing down development may be the very certain way to put off change to our built environment. But the one thing that will occur immediately is that the cost own and lease, the remaining real estate, will rise even more quickly than it already is. It's extremely expensive to own and lease in this town and will become even more so. Zone for what you want. And if what you want is to chase small business out of town even faster than it is being chased out of today, because that's who will bear the brunt of this, then setting more limits on growth is the very best way to do that. I do think there's a limit to how much commercial use our city can support, but I have very little confidence that this city is anywhere close to determining what that is. We can barely agree on how many parking spaces we need downtown. We do not even know how many people work here. But we can all agree that there is more traffic and not enough parking spaces. That is a problem that needs the solution.
Thank you. Nielsen Buchanan to be followed by Peter Stone.
Nielsen Buchanan, down the street on Bryant. I think this discussion and the threat of a downtown cap has achieved remarkable success today for no other reason you've got the suits coming out. And I think it really is, if I think back to the legends of Hewlett and Packard, I was thinking, "What would they be doing?" And I think in a way with Gene McCowen and HP and other type people hovering around in the background, that that's the thing you really want to happen. The cap itself is really kind of quaint and provincial. Palo Alto is a contradictory town. It's got two quaint, provincial downtowns controlled by quaint, provincial investors and property owners. Then it has a massive university. It's got a massive Stanford Research Park. It's got incredible scholars and scientists. But we're going to be dwarfed. 56 acres of Facebook, Moffett Field, Sunnyvale, all those are going to be in the millions of square feet, none of which are going to ever happen in the two downtowns. So we've got apples and oranges here, and the concept of cap on what is really what you need to be asking. But what I'd ask is that since we've got some new, not old players newly at the table, and I do believe that the single-use Audemars Bille is probably the common villain, and the best way to get on top of that creature is to really create a Manhattan-style traffic demand management. We've got great experts at Stanford University to help precipitate that. What I'd ask the suits to come in for is three years of seed funding. It's going to take three years of trial and error and research to even think about getting the traffic demand management functional. What we've got going now is shallow, it's not visionary, and it's terribly underfunded. It'll never reach what you want it to do. So while you've got all these folks in the room tonight, I would ask them for a little quarter of a million dollars each for three-year funding and get TMA off to a great start. Thanks.
Peter Stone to be followed by our last speaker Cedric Delbajourdier.
Mayor Holman, council members, my name's Peter Stone. I'm speaking on behalf of the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce as the Chair of the Business Advocacy and Public Policy Forum. I want to say first, the chamber will be actively participating both in the transportation management initiatives and in the comprehensive plan update process. And I certainly expect all of the issues that are being on the table tonight to be crucial parts of that, both of those processes. And we certainly support a full airing and debate and assessment of the proposals and specific proposals for action. What I want to do tonight is express a concern that others have expressed as well about some of the suggestions for interim measures, which we have to understand things that are as drastic as a two-year moratorium on office development, which I don't believe is going to happen, shouldn't happen. But whatever may be done to forestall further growth before the comprehensive plan is revised are going to have impacts on our members, which range from some of those large research park companies down to mom-and-pop retailers throughout Palo Alto. We need to understand those impacts before anything is adopted. We need to balance those impacts to the benefits that people believe will flow from the interim measures that may be adopted. So I would just urge the council to proceed very deliberately in the area of interim measures. We'll certainly be following with great interest. And I think that the number of commenters here tonight and the depths of feelings that are being expressed by people on various sides of the very complex issues here attest to the fact that there's going to be a lot of scrutiny on what we collectively do in this area. So please, let's make use of this deliberative process that was very well, I think we have a very well-regarded process here in Palo Alto. I hope we'll continue that as we go forward on this set of issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Cedric Delbajourdier.
Hello, honorable counsel and mayor, city staff. So while I would personally benefit from more and more jobs here, so I could find one here instead of San Francisco and increased rental income, there's impacts which include of the jobs-housing imbalance, which include increased traffic, children can't afford to live in the neighborhoods they grew up in, and regionally agricultural lands are being lost and converted to housing subdivisions. I think you'll need additional information from staff such as annual numbers for office growth in square feet, the number of jobs, the residential population changes, and the changes in the housing units. I support the use of impact fees, including funding for housing development. I would use zoning changes to change from exclusively office to mixed use with either residential or retail or restaurants as appropriate. I noticed that the proposed annual caps are nearly identical to the historical growth trends. So if caps are the chosen option, then I think they would need to be at the lower end of the spectrum. And then also, if you do cap office growth, please consider that there's still a housing-jobs imbalance. So we're still going to need growth in housing. Otherwise, this imbalance and the impacts of the imbalance will continue in perpetuity. And then the last thing I wanted to point out is that, as the previous speaker mentioned, that this can have an impact on small businesses, that this sort of relates to, for instance, the California merchants had provided a petition for limits on chain, retail chains, and stuff like that. So there might be other tools that you can use to support the small businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you to everyone for coming this evening and for sharing your thoughts. They're much appreciated and diverse, as you could hear. Council members, I said I would ask and check in with you all. It is just before nine. Currently have this item going, as a revised schedule, we have this one going to 9:30, which takes us through, if we keep everything on the agenda, through item 14, it takes us to 11. I would just suggest that item 12 should be dispatched because every week that we go without having that implemented, as city managers pointed out, means that we are not collecting those impact fees. And then, city manager, could you remind us, please, of the timeliness of 14? If you would, please.
And I may need to turn to one of the authors of this, but I was just, I understood that just about this time right now, there's sort of some momentum building in a series of different jurisdictions who are taking action on the CalPERS divestment issue, and there might actually be a, I don't know if Councilmember Berman wanted to speak to that or not.
Councilmember Berman, you were the lead author on this. Do you want to comment on timeliness of this particular item?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the hope, I mean, first of all, I think the folks from the community who approached me about this item are planning a fairly large group of supporters to come tonight. And coincided that with an op-ed they had in the Weekly this Friday. And also coincides with a big event this upcoming weekend across the country to kind of further that effort. So, you know, if it's possible to keep that item on the agenda tonight, I think that would be very appreciated by myself and the 150-plus folks in the community who signed letters to us addressing this issue.
Council members, why don't we see, we don't have any extra staff here for number 13. Why don't we see how far we can get on item number 11? I'm a strong proponent of keeping 12 and 14 on the agenda this evening. We should be able to dispatch them fairly quickly. Councilmember Burt, you had an idea?
Might we consider moving item number 12 to the end of the agenda since we have members of the public here for 13 and 14? And if we're still going to attempt to complete all the items, maybe that would be a better way to accommodate the public.
We could do that, move 13 and 14 up, but that means we're committing to doing number 13. So, which I'm game for, but I just want to make sure you're all game for that. Okay. Which means, which, I'm sorry? Which means that we will be limiting ourselves time-wise for item number 11, knowing that we will have a second meeting on this topic. So, council members.
What time are we going to move it to? Are we moving to 9:30?
9:30 is the time I'd mentioned that we have this, too, and that takes us through 11 o'clock with our current agenda.
It's a hard stop. I think that's, I mean, you're going to be able to give us enough work to kind of go back and do follow-up for the meeting in, what, two weeks?
Yes. And remember the one advisory that I'm hoping that council members will hearken to, if that's the right language, is that not starting a complicated motion, you know, when we're near the end of our timeframe here, so.
So given we only have a half an hour, I would actually suggest we defer motions and we make comments and, you know, give some staff some suggestions.
Just as long as we don't get to complicated motions toward the end of our time. So I think Councilmember Wobak was the first one to turn his light on, and the others of you, I'm sorry, didn't see what the order was. Okay, Councilmember Wobak.
Thank you, staff, for the report, and thank you, Mayor Holman. And also, thank you, members of the public, for your comments. Just to kind of frame this discussion a little bit, this is going to touch on the, and is obviously touching on several of the most contentious issues in Palo Alto. So I'm going to use this as an opportunity to call for civility, which doesn't mean don't speak your mind. It means listen to others when they speak their minds. We're not going to agree with each other on a lot of these things, but I've actually been surprised by some of the comments I've heard from unexpected corners of the community tonight, sharing a lot of my views in ways that I had not anticipated. And so I hope that as we move forward, we listen to each other very carefully. It's only in a safe environment that we can really brainstorm. And if this is about brainstorming, we need to make sure it's safe so that everybody can share crazy ideas, brainstorm, then, you know, look at those ideas, critique them after they're out there. But at least make sure that as we're having this conversation, we're allowing ideas to get out there. This discussion isn't about blocking offices because we hate offices. Offices aren't inherently evil, and the people who work in offices aren't inherently evil. This is about addressing the negative impacts of offices. If we were convinced that we could effectively eliminate the negative impacts of offices, we would not be even really considering opposing offices. But the negative impacts have not been eliminated, and they are severe. These include traffic, parking, housing demand and limited supply, which is driven up by more offices and jobs. This causes a whole variety of harms to residents, both new residents and long-term residents, a decreasing quality of life and livability for everybody. Another issue that has been raised by a couple of people is retail replacement with offices. And so let's make sure that we're results-oriented and not fixated on the policy. You know, start with our values, from that drive a vision, from that drive policies. Policies are tools in a toolbox. Let's make sure we're using the right tools to address our problems, and let's stay open-minded about those tools. First, I want to really emphasize a potential unintended consequence if we impose too harsh a cap with this. And just remind everybody, I've always been saying that we probably don't need a whole lot more office space in Palo Alto. That's where I'm coming from. That's my approach to this. I think we don't need a lot of office space. But there's one thing I do want to point out, which is if we do limit office development, we limit the supply without limiting the demand, thus costs will rise. Thus, smaller businesses with slimmer margins will likely be displaced by larger and more profitable companies. I'm seriously concerned about driving out small professional offices. I recall last fall, speaking with one gentleman in particular, a resident of Baron Park, he was, I can't remember if he was a therapist or psychiatrist, but he had a small office downtown, and he was asking me, "What's the city going to do to make it possible for small professional offices like his and some of his friends to not be priced out?" They're already getting priced out, and anything we do to increase costs by limiting supply further than we already do could make their situation worse. And startups are kind of in the same boats, in the same boat. Small companies are getting pushed out of Palo Alto. Again, my emphasis is on housing, but I don't want to forget about these challenges. If we make decisions that have negative consequences, let's at least be open-eyed about what those consequences will be. And so, you know, looking at things like the San Francisco split, you know, for large, one cap for large developments or large offices, another cap for small office development is something that I think is worth serious consideration of. If we, and also, if we do implement a cap, I would suggest that we consider pairing it with protections or incentives for small businesses. Perhaps we can do something to incentivize leasing to smaller businesses. I'm open-minded about how to do this, but I think it's important. I actually don't think that a cap will significantly reduce office development, but it might provide a level of safety against a huge spike in the near future. I think it may help modestly address the harms of unbalanced planning, which we've had with a lot of office development without housing and transportation to support it. And it might buy us time to increase our housing supply, to fix our parking problems, and improve our non-car-transportation options. It can buy us time as we work on our comprehensive plan and perhaps even consider a streamlined process for crafting specific plans, as a couple of people up on this dais with us worked on in the past on South of Forest area. I would emphasize that I think specific plans, while lengthy to produce, are an excellent tool to help the community get the results it wants, whether that's for downtown, Cal Ave, Stanford Research Park, San Antonio Bay Shore, or any other neighborhood. But they are very time-consuming, I recognize that. But we shouldn't kid ourselves. Any kind of cap is not going to solve our problems on its own. It's, to be charitable, maybe a tourniquet. A tourniquet is a very temporary solution which can cause more harm than good if not utilized properly. A tourniquet buys you time to perform other urgent, important medical work. Tourniquets are designed to address existential threats, but if you aren't careful, you could lose a limb. Small businesses in Palo Alto could be among those limbs. So a few things to think about when it comes to conversions. Let's look for ways to make it easier to convert office and R&amp;D space to housing and retail. Let's look at ways to make it harder to convert retail and housing to office and R&amp;D. For the duration, I think we should think about keeping it short while we work on other issues, again, using the tourniquet metaphor. I definitely think that it's important that we look at ways to build community trust, bring people together, make sure we're on the same page, getting a handle on the major challenges we are facing, all of those impacts. And to the degree that some kind of interim office and R&amp;D cap can achieve that, I'm open to it. When it comes to traffic, as When it comes to traffic, as Bob Moss said, maybe we should mandate TDM for offices, and maybe we should do it for housing, too. The status quo is a mess, but in a lot of ways, over the last year, the city started moving the right direction on transportation. One thing I would say about transportation, especially in light of the research that's been done by several of the largest employers in downtown Palo Alto, there's some impressive work being done. When you're looking at, you know, three of the largest employers in downtown Palo Alto achieving 30% single, or 37% single occupancy vehicle ride share, that's really good. That means that, you know, only 37% of employers for, was it Palantir, Survey Monkey, and Relay IQ, only 37% of them are driving a single occupancy vehicle. That's really good. It's actually smaller companies that are having a harder time getting those kinds of great TDM numbers, and we should make sure that our transit management agency works to bring smaller companies into the fold to reduce car trips. When it comes to parking, when it comes to parking, our current system is incredibly bureaucratic. It's very difficult for companies to allow multiple employees over the course of a day, or even over the course of a year, to use a single parking pass the company's paid for. Thus, you end up with very low utilization of parking spaces in downtown. These are the kinds of things we can work on in an interim basis without having to redo our comprehensive plan or finish the comp plan update. There's a lot we can do to just make the, our permit parking system for employers more efficient and more flexible. Something else I think we should think about is for parking spaces that are on existing buildings and existing lots and garages that are privately owned, let's look for ways to improve the ability of these companies to lease out or rent out their own parking spaces to others if they're not fully utilizing them. Now, this could be run by the city, could be run by those companies, and there are also third-party companies that do this professionally, so we might think about bringing in a third-party company to manage a system like that. Again, these are things we should be working on regardless of a cap. They're interim measures, or things that we could start working on quickly before doing our, finishing our comprehensive plan. On housing and the jobs-housing imbalance, some of the more pro-development members of the community, even some friends of mine, might not like the fact that I emphasize this, but also, on the other hand, people who are staunchly anti-development might not like it either, but we have a jobs-housing balance. It's actually the worst in the country, and addressing it is, by only adding housing will not be enough, and addressing it only by limiting office development won't be enough. You have to work on both sides of the scale. We also have the highest median rent in the country, which, as I've said before, a whole lot of negative impacts for the whole community, and it's complete, not entirely, but very significantly tied to our jobs-housing imbalance. Our jobs-housing imbalance is a central contributor to our high median rents, which price a lot of people out of Palo Alto, forcing them to drive here even if they don't want to, contributing to traffic and parking problems.
Councilmember Wobak, you know you do have another cut at this next time.
The point I'm trying to get at is, let's think about, again, let's think about all of the impacts, not just the traffic and parking impacts, but all of the negative impacts of too much office development or of office development without properly thinking about how it negatively impacts the community. Let's explore a variety of options as we move forward, perhaps tying commercial development to housing, perhaps tying commercial development to more TDM measures. But those are the kinds of things we need to focus on.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember DeVois. And as best we can, you know.
Yep, three minutes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that.
All right, go talk very fast. Pay attention. So, I agree with many of Councilmember Wobak's comments, particularly about the relationship between commercial and housing that you said at the beginning of your comments. I also like to point out, we had a recent election, and I think all five of the winning candidates said that there was a need to moderate commercial impacts. So, I think we have very clear, very current input from the broad community based on the last election. In terms of goals, I think we should be clear, this isn't just about traffic and parking. It's about maintaining the aesthetic appearance and function of our city while allowing growth, which adds to the benefits of living here. So, those are real goals, clear benefits, and reasons for doing this. Where do we want our 3.0-plus jobs-to-housing ratio to go? And what is the vision we have? I think that's really what this is getting to. What I heard from the community during the election is we need to see the jobs-housing ratio shrink, and I think that needs, means we have to work on both sides of that equation, which means slowing non-retail office. In the staff report, the comp plan process was laid out as a 12-month process, so I think we need to talk about that and not be driven by that 12-month schedule. I think Councilmember Burt has mentioned 24 months. I think we should include an explicit goal that the new process should provide clarity and consistency for residents and developers and staff, resulting in more efficiency, not less. So, if we end up with a beauty contest or something, when we're setting up those rules, let's pay attention to how we can do it efficiently and not create more flexibility and options that just slow the process down. We shouldn't assume that an annual cap would modify the existing caps. We have, I think, enough space for four or five more years under those caps, so I would say let's test an annual cap before we remove the existing cap. We need to consider the impacts of the 1.3 million square feet from Stanford Medical. I thought that my questions were very good. I won't save time, but I would like to see us evaluate a smaller range, like 10,000 to 40,000 feet in an annual cap. I think a beauty contest with clear criteria is key, and consider giving points for lower I think if we look at geographic regions, we should look at parking shortfall, level of service intersections that are at DNF as part of the geographic definition. I'd say no to rolling over unused allocations. I think if you look at the current caps in other cities and our current cap, they rarely hit the cap. So, you know, if a cap is never invoked, do you have a cap? That's kind of the question. And then, some interim changes I would like us to consider is evaluating assumption of 100 square foot per employee in terms of intensity of use. I think it would be reasonable to discuss a moratorium, perhaps for the rest of this year until we have data from the Business Registry and the Downtown RPP.
And if you wanted to know when three minutes is?
Is it up? Am I up?
It is.
Okay. Just let me look real quick. Also, I think we may want to look at exceptions in our current ordinances and just review those exceptions and consider closing some of them if the reason they're there as an incentive is no longer needed. And I will stop there.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Yeah, I want to thank staff for bringing to us options, alternatives, and good-quality data, plenty of data for us to move ahead on. I'd like to acknowledge what happened tonight. For the first time in years, we've been talking about a comp plan, but people here were actually on all sides, talking about the future of our city, and that's what the comp plan should be. So, let me make a simple motion. Staff will set the comp plan update to explore limited, limiting office R&amp;D square footage each year within 10,000 to 45,000 square feet.
Could you repeat that, please?
Staff will set the comp plan update to explore limiting office R&amp;D square footage each year within 10,000 to 45,000 square feet.
Second, I think.
So, a motion made by Vice Mayor Schmidt, seconded by Councilmember Phil Seth. Do you care to speak to your motion?
Yeah, if I could just make four simple reasons why a growth cap makes sense for us. First, the community survey, citizen's survey. We went out for the second year in a row. Parking, traffic, planning, and the quality of development scored in the 40 percentile ranking of approval. If you look at all the other operating units of the city, they average 90%. So, these are in the bottom half. If you look at that, this is the second year in a row that's happened, and these issues, parking, traffic, land use, quality of development, are 40% lower than they were in the decade of 2010s. What's taking place? We are a commuter city. If you look at employed residents against total working population in Palo Alto, and that excludes Stanford, the ratio is 1 to 3. Look around us. Santa Clara County average is 1.0. We're 3.1. The Bay Area, 1.4. We're at 3.3 to 1. If you look at our future, the next item has a thing in it that says, "The city has given us a forecast for the next 20 years." It said there would be 10,000 new residents in town and 21,000 new jobs. In other words, our forecast as a city is, we like having that 3 to 1 ratio, we want to be a commuter city. And yet, our citizen's survey said, no, we are upset about the speed and intensity of development. We look for some benefits. Point number three, what do we get out of commercial growth? If you look at property taxes, residents pay $3 for every $1 paid by commercial enterprises in town. If you look over the last four years, every year, the share of the commercial sector goes down by one percentage point, from 30% to 25%. And this is during a time where the commercial sector is growing twice or three times as fast as the residential side. Sales tax, 2/3 of the daily population is made up of residents. The rest, or the ratio of residents to workers is 66%. And yet, residents pay three times as much sale tax as workers who've come to town. During this time period, we're talking about, 2001 to 2015, commercial office space has grown by 517,000 square feet. Retail, it's declined by 37,000 square feet. Is this our future? Is this what we want? Shouldn't we have a debate about that? And while we're debating it, let's admit that we haven't dealt with our existing problem. There are 1,600 cars of workers parked in residential neighborhoods each day. So, let's have a public debate. Let's hear about the benefits we get. We've heard some tonight, but let's hear what they are, and let's address the issues that we as a city had and decide what we want to be 10, 15 years from now.
So, before you speak to your second, Councilmember Phil Seth, we had committed ourselves to a 9:30 hard stop. So, I'm suggesting that you speak to your second, and then I need a little guidance from the city attorney. Do we then table the motion and continue the meeting? Do we need, do we need motions to do both of those things?
I'll, I'll proceed. But if that's what you can do, I'll bet.
Yes, okay, thank you. Councilmember Phil Seth, you'd like to speak to your second.
Okay, thanks very much. So, first of all, I want to echo Councilmember Schmidt here and compliment the staff on this. I thought it was a great assessment. I thought it was direct, concise, cut straight to the heart of the issue. So, thank you very much for this. You know, I sort of wanted to frame the pros and cons of this as I see them, but I think most of this is, or a lot of this has been said already. I think, you know, a lot of it has to do, although not all of it, with the jobs versus housing ratio. You know, we sort of talked a lot about the traffic and parking and the tendency to drive up the prices of housing around here. You know, as far as transportation management is concerned, you know, I think everybody here supports that, but, you know, it's only going to be a partial solution, right? There is a difference between making things better and just making them less worse, okay? So, if you add 100 commuters and half of them don't use cars, okay, then that's still 50 new drivers and another 100 car trips every day, okay? And transportation management won't mitigate that completely. Another impact of the jobs-housing ratio is it gets ABAG on our case, right? I think a lot of us in town worry about regional housing mandates and the long-term impact of those on our schools and services capability. It's kind of hard for us to go back to ABAG at the same time we're piling large amounts of new job space every year. One other thing that hasn't been talked about, and I beg everybody's forbearance on going on a tangent here for a second, but I think it is relevant, has to do with sustainability. Concrete production is one of the environmentally dirtiest industries on earth, and one local estimate is that new concrete and steel building construction adds typically 70 to 80 pounds of carbon dioxide per square foot of commercial space. So, what does that mean? It means if you take, for example, the 385 Sherman project that got approved a year odd ago, it's 55,000-square-foot office building, so creating the materials for that building will put almost 2,000 tons of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. There is no level of LEED certification that will ever make up for that, and none of these things is really a green project. Save, for example, to save 2,000 tons of carbon dioxide, what you'd have to do is take 400 cars off the road for a year. Today, Palo Alto has, by comparison, 900 EVs in town, so two office buildings like 385 Sherman would basically negate the city's entire EV program, public and private. My point here is it's not just about traffic. There's multiple dimensions to this that we need to look at all of them. Yes, there are some positives, you know, attracting leading-edge startups to Palo Alto contributes to our brand image. There is some, some support for the city economy, although, as Councilmember Schmidt has pointed out, it's pretty small. But I think it looks pretty clear that for a majority of Palo Alto residents, we're at a point in time where the incremental benefits of more office expansion are outweighed by the incremental costs. And again, there's an argument that the negatives can be mitigated, but they can't be mitigated completely. It is the first rule of holes, okay? When you're in one, stop digging. You know, I think there's actually some conceptual acceptance of this, yet our codes and our zoning don't really seem to have managed it the way they were intended. You know, our floor-area ratio limits say one thing, but there's a lot of places in town where the actual buildings don't match the floor-area ratio limits. You know, I sort of worry a little bit that we've built up a culture of, you know, sort of each individual exception is just a drop in the bucket, but over time, it's added up to a lot of drops. So, I think it is time we took some further action, and I would support the staff looking into a cap. I think we ought to give office growth a breather and let housing catch up a little bit, and not, I'd like to see it not wait for the comp plan process. I do agree, we need to proceed deliberately about that, and I think we're going to have the opportunity as staff goes and explore this, but I don't think that we should do nothing, okay? The only one other thing I would add is, in regards to economic cycles, you know, we're going to continue to go through upturns and downthrus in the future, like everywhere else. Things may change. We may decide someday that we actually do need more office space, so I'd hate to see something permanent, and I think maybe part of this is, you know, we should involve a time horizon, right, to review as a component of this. Thanks very much.
So, city attorney, is it two motions, table and continue this meeting?
No. Thank you, Mayor Holman. Two motions are not needed. You can just accept a motion to continue the item to the 2nd of March, and if the council votes to do that, then you'll just be carrying this motion over to, this matter over to that day for further discussion and continuation where you left off.
Okay, so I will make that motion, just to be, I'll make that motion looking for a second. Seconded by Councilmember Wobak. When we, this has been a difficult item to manage, but we agreed that we were going to end this, this agenda item at 9:30, and I have kept track of who got to speak under comments. And when we take this item up again at March 2nd, the people who did not get to speak under the comments section will be coming first. Those would be Burt, Scharf, and Berman. So, that would be the order of speakers, if they so desire, when we take this up again on March 2nd. We knew this was going to be a two-part conversation and likely We knew this was going to be a two-part conversation, and likely when we set that short timeframe, not everybody was going to get to speak under comments, so I hope that is understood and understandable. So, I think that's all I need to say. The motion, Councilmember Wobak? Okay. Any other comments, questions, or we will vote, vote on the board?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I didn't see your light, sorry. Councilmember Bert?
Yeah, well, I want to say that I'm displeased with this process. When we talked about having a half an hour for a discussion, which I said at the outset of the meeting, I thought was not going to cut it, this amount of time that we're allocating even for this preliminary discussion on this process. The half hour was, my understanding, wasn't going to be a half hour divided among four council members. It was going to be among the nine. And, and the mayor had also talked about, I thought, of, that we would not be entertaining a motion that would be involved and would be divided between the two meetings, and that appears to be precisely what we have. And, so, I have real misgivings about whether this is tabled and going forward, I think it's premature. I thought we were going to have a deliberative and thoughtful discussion before diving in to recommendations that I think are only half-thought-through at best.
That's why we're having a second meeting.
Well, but we got a motion on the table already, and five of the nine of us haven't had a chance to even begin to discuss the, the substance of the topic tonight. So, I would have preferred this motion to have been withdrawn, and I was prepared to make a substitute motion to that effect. I, I think these are important issues that are going to require a great deal of consideration and deliberation before we give even the guidance to staff on two topic areas, what we do on an interim basis and guidance on the comp plan direction. And I think this was really, the, the initial motion was really premature and out of order for the guidance that was provided at the outset and which I thought we had agreed to as council members and that a number of us had intended to abide to. So, in the interest of moving forward, I will support the substitute motion, but when we reconvene, this matter next, I would like to see the council and the maker and the secondor reconsider rushing forward with a motion on the table before we've had really deliberative discussion, which these topics weren't. This is, this is important stuff, and leaping to specific recommendations before we've had that meaningful discussion is really inappropriate.
My personal opinion is, you heard earlier that I would wish not for motions coming late tonight, but the motion was made. So, we are not voting, we are not, we are not voting on the motion tonight. We are tabling it and continuing the meeting. Councilmember Scharf, do you have something you need to add?
I do. I actually completely agree with Councilmember Bert and found the process to be very unfortunate. I would like to offer an amendment to your substitute motion.
There is no substitute motion on the floor.
Yeah, well, it says on the thing, it says, "Mayor Holman moved second by Councilmember Wobak to continue this item."
Continuation, it's not a substitute.
It's not a substitute.
All right, whatever it is, the motion. So, I would like to amend it, that it, that the Mayor Holman moved, Councilmember Calm to continue this item in March 22nd, and that the motion on the floor be withdrawn.
Does the maker have to withdraw?
No, well, it goes away. I can substitute that out. If you, if you'd like me to come up with some language that says, "And staff will have listened to what the council said today and, and come back to us."
Put that in the motion, dude.
You know? I think the intent's pretty clear.
City attorney? That can be the amended motion?
It's accepted by the maker and the secondor. I accept a second.
I don't know that it makes a whole lot of difference. We're not voting on the motion. We're not taking any more comments on the motion. We're simply picking up where we left off.
So, I believe it does. It sets a tone.
So, you can vote, so you can vote, so you can vote the motion down if you don't like it when we meet, take this up again on March 2nd. And we can sit here and talk about this for another half hour, or we can continue with the rest of the meeting.
So, I have a motion on the floor. If you don't accept it, I need a second.
Okay, do we need a second?
Do you have a second? Why, it accepted it as, as an amendment, so.
The maker did not, so there's no second yet. I have a second.
Okay, there is an amendment by Councilmember Scharf and seconded by Councilmember Bert to continue this item in March 2, and the motion on the floor be withdrawn. Any other comments on that motion? City manager, you have your light on.
Yes, thank you. I rarely would stick my neck in the middle of this, but sitting here, it's pretty obvious what's going on, and it doesn't seem to me that this, early out of the gate, we ought to get in a divided situation and all on the council. I mean, you're just beginning the discussion. Nothing is lost, I'm sorry, nothing is lost by the substitute motion passing. We're going to be back in, whatever it is, 15, 20 days.
Seems there's nothing lost either way to me. But, I thought, no, you did second it, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Just very briefly, I think the difference is that when we begin our next meeting, it won't be framed around a specific motion that I think is premature. It'll begin what should have been the thoughtful discussion that we, we should have been proceeding with. So, that's, I think, an important distinction.
Okay, with that, we'll vote on the board. And that motion passes on an eight to two vote. Councilmembers.
Six to two.
I'm sorry, six to two, I'm sorry. All of a sudden, we're a larger council. On a, on a six to two vote with Councilmembers Felsyth and Schmidt voting no, Councilmember Niss absent. Okay, with that, oh, and the motion was, I'm sorry, the motion was to continue this item to March 2, with the motion on the floor being withdrawn, the motion on the floor being stated earlier. So, with that, I believe we had indication that we would like to move item number 14 forward due to the number of people who were here to speak to that item.
And 13 also?
And 13 as well. So, we'll take up 12 last. So, item number 14.
Why don't we just do 13 first?
Do you guys just like? Okay, item number 14. Councilmember Berman, do you care to kick this off?
Oh, we're at 14, but 14.
13.
Yes, we are.
Is that?
And if we have members of the public who'd care to speak to this item?
Sorry, I, I thought the intention was to move 12 last.
We are moving 12 last.
So, let's keep 13, because I think.
Well, 14 forward isn't the same thing as 12 last.
Well, I thought there were a lot of people here to speak to 14, and that's why we're moving 14 first.
13 and 14, a lot of people. That's why moving 12 last is different from 14 forward.
You know, you guys, you guys, knock it off.
No, no.
We're going to do 14 now.
Mayor Holman, can I just make one small point? Note, with, with full respect to the chair, if we were to do 13 now, it would align perfectly with the timing of the agenda, which I think the members of the public have been kind of planning on. And so, I, I understand the conversation that we had earlier, but then when we punted 12, I think it creates a perfect opportunity for us to stick with the timing, given, just given that that's, I think, what the members of the public were planning on when they were planning on being here to speak to the items. So, if it's okay with, with Madam Chair, it would be great to, to do 13 now, which aligns with the timing of 13 that people were planning on.
Then 14, then 12.
And then 14, and then 12.
So.
If that's okay with you.
I apologize, I had not heard earlier that there were a lot of people here to speak to number 13, so, okay. So, we'll do number 13 then, which I have cards for. Councilwoman Berman, were you the lead on this one?
I believe Councilmember Bert was.
Okay. Councilmember Bert, would you care to kick this off?
I'm happy to talk about it, but.
If you were the lead on this, would you care to kick this off?
Yes, so the, the broad concept is that we have seen several different cities in our subregion already enact minimum wage ordinances, and they're based upon the general notion that our subregion has a significantly higher cost of living than the state as a whole, and that the, the income from our present minimum wage is significantly substandard from what's necessary for minimum survival in this region. The, the proposal is to refer these actions to the Policy and Services Committee for deeper vetting and to return to the council with a series of recommendations as a result. So, I think, other than that, the proposal speaks in more depth and stands on its own.
Any other colleagues on the memo care to speak to this? Councilmember Berman?
Thank you very much, and thank you to Councilmember, Councilmember Bert for kicking this off. I'll, I'll too be brief, because the goal of this memo is to send this to Policy and Services for a more robust discussion at that point. I'm heartened to see so many folks from the community come to, to show support for this initiative. I think it's definitely the direction that Palo Alto should go. Currently, a minimum wage employee working 2,000 hours a year makes $18,000 a year. And, and at work the other day, I received an email with a flyer from the Silicon Valley Community Foundation and Rise Together, Our Commitment to End Poverty, and a study that they had done showed that the average self-sufficiency standard in Santa Clara County in 2014 for two adults with one preschool and one school-aged child was almost $82,000 a year. The cost of living in Silicon Valley has risen dramatically. The wage disparity in Silicon Valley has risen dramatically, and it's, I, I think the city should have a serious discussion about, you know, increasing the minimum wage to, to try to alleviate a part of that disparity.
I have no other lights. We do have eight members of the public who would care to speak to this item. Chris, first speaker is Chris London, to be followed by Paul George, and, what time are we? You will have three minutes to speak to this.
Great, thank you very much. Chris London, I live in the Midtown area, lifelong Palo Alto resident. I'm speaking as a steering committee member of MultiFaith Voices for Peace and Justice, a local interfaith organization working on peace and justice issues since 2003. MultiFaith Voices represents more than 30 faith communities in the peninsula. I'm also speaking as a member of the Human Concerns Committee of St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Parish in Palo Alto. MultiFaith Voices has joined, raised the Wage Coalition of the Peninsula. Both our organizations are wholeheartedly in support of this adoption of a local ordinance to raise the minimum wage. I agree with much of what you said, the minimum wage is just not sufficient. Now that we have had other local communities make the increase, it sort of greases the skids, and I hope Palo Alto can continue the example. San Jose, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, San Francisco, Oakland, all have taken local initiative to raise the minimum wage, and I encourage you to send this to the Policies and Services Committee for further work. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul George, to be followed by Sheldon Ehrlich.
Thank you. My name is Paul George. I'm the Director of Peninsula Peace and Justice Center, which has been based here in Palo Alto for 34 years. We're also a member of the Raise the Wage Coalition, which spearheaded the recent effort last year to raise the wage in Mountain View. I want to thank the four council members who brought this on, and I, I hope the council will approve having a thoughtful discussion to, to move this ahead. I'd like to just read you a brief letter that's been signed by over 200 residents of Palo Alto and endorsed by 13 organizations that make up the Raise the Wage Coalition. Congress has failed to raise the minimum, federal minimum wage. As a result, cities and states around the country are taking it upon themselves to raise the local minimum wage. They understand that full-time workers should not have to struggle to pay their rent or feed their families. California has a statewide minimum wage that is higher than the federal standard, but it is still, it still isn't high enough, especially in areas with high costs of living like ours. That's why Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and San Jose have set their own minimum wage levels and ensured that the wage increases automatically with inflation, something that neither the Californian nor federal minimums do. We need to take this step in our town as well. Please take action on behalf of your constituents and raise the wage. Thank you. I'll leave a copy here.
And thank you very much. Sheldon Ehrlich, to be followed by Ryan Larkin. I don't see Ryan Larkin, so, Win Gersich?
Ryan Larkin is here.
There he is.
I am Ryan Larkin, here to speak to my personal values, but also representing the participants in the faith community of the First Presbyterian Church of Palo Alto over on Calper Street, where I serve as one of their pastors. First Presbyterian is one of 20 congregations in Palo Alto that make up multi-faith Voices for Peace and Justice, and I speak on behalf of their members also, which include people of the Jewish, Muslim, Quaker, and Unitarian faith traditions. We ask you to move forward the ordinance that will bring the city's minimum wage closer to a number that allows people to, who work in Palo Alto, to also live in Palo Alto. We believe that it is right that all people who work here have the option to avoid, to afford shelter that is not three or four hours' drive away, and that their shelter would be safe and warm, and a $15 minimum wage would make it more affordable for workers to sleep in a bed rather than the seat of an automobile. The California minimum wage is not adequate, even as it is higher than the federal minimum wage. Other nearby cities, as you've been reminded, identified the need to act and have or are moving toward a $15 minimum wage. The people of Palo Alto are, and have always been, and always will be compassionate, caring, and just, and we will overwhelmingly support fair wages for all who work here. Please continue to bring this ordinance along to final vote, and then make it law to include automatic adjustments for inflation. Thank you.
I think I may have called Sheldon Ehrlich and then did not invite him to speak. Do not see him. Win Gersich, to be followed by Jeff Weaver.
Hello, I was at the East Palo Alto City Council last week, and they were talking about how proud they were of the city council to consider raising the minimum wage here because a lot of the people who work, who live in East Palo Alto work over here, and this would raise their standard of living. But I want to tell you, I used to work at Avis in South City, and the drivers that worked for Avis made minimum wage, and most of them worked two shifts, so they worked 16 hours a day. And when these drivers used to come in, they were on their cell phones the minute they got to the place where they repair the cars in South City, and they're calling their kids because they're gone 16 hours a day. And these people were dead tired. And what's amazing is that when you think about this, these people wanted to work, and they were glad that they worked, and most of them were from other countries. I mean, we had a lot of, there was Filipinos, a lot of Polynesian people, a lot of Latinos that, you know, they were thrilled to have a job, and they wanted to work. But when you think that these people aren't home being able to watch their kids because they have to work 16 hours a day, what are your kids doing? They're getting into gangs, they're doing crime and stuff, because there's nobody at home when both parents are working 16 hours a day. And when they get home, they're so exhausted, their kids are in bed, and when you sit there and you think of all these people working 16 hours a day just to make a roof over their head for their children, it's sickening. And if you Google minimum wage in other countries, I know Australia is 20 bucks an hour, it's 20 bucks an hour for minimum wage. And check it out. I mean, other countries pay a lot more than what we're paying even here, and yet we have one of the highest costs of living anywhere. I live in Hayward. Hayward's not a rich city, and the people are making minimum wage, and they're barely making it, and there's a lot of homeless. And it's amazing, because even if you're a landlord or a tenant, you rent something out, you got four or five people living there. They all move in because everybody's trying to squeeze their friends in because they can't afford the rent. And if anything happens, or you lose your job, or they lay somebody off, we're going to have more and more people homeless and more and more crime. So, when people can't make the minimum wage, you think the crime's going to go up. And I think it's absolutely sickening that when people can't. And I think it's absolutely sickening that when people can't support their families, and what we're doing to these children that are home alone, you know, and then everybody's worried about the gangs in Hayward and all these shootings and stuff like that, and you think, well, their parents aren't home to watch them. And, you know, it's important that you do this, and I hope that you set an example for other cities. And now, I'm proud that you're considering this. And I know personally, from the people that I worked with that made minimum wage, it's scary to watch. And the stuff that they have to do, they're proud to work in this country, and they should be able to eat. And when you have to, it's sad. I used to bring food and give them to apples and things, and I gave food to the people that would come in and the drivers, because most of them didn't have money for lunch, working 16 hours a day. And I think that's sickening. And it's really frightening to know that we have people in this country that are the working poor. And when this city was considering not letting homeless sleep in their cars, how dare you? I mean, if these people are making $18,000 a year, what do you expect them to do?
Thank you. Jeff Weaver, to be followed by Carol Lamont.
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, excuse my attire, I just came from coaching the junior warriors. My name is Jeff Weaver, so I am a living wage activist in Silicon Valley. I am a member of SIU Local 521 and also work for the County of San Mateo. So I am here just to talk about the low-wage workers in Silicon Valley. I'm glad that the colleague's memo that is being voted on today is the first step in having Palo Alto provide a minimum wage ordinance above the poverty level. As FDR said, "No business which depends on existence of paying less than the living wage to its workers has any right to continue in this country." Today, we see a dual recovery happening in Silicon Valley. With the boom of high tech, we also have seen high housing costs, high inflation, and ever-growing income disparity in our communities. We ask you to exercise bold leadership in addressing the problem that's facing our community, and any ordinance you debate should discuss everything related to compensation, not just wages. Access to quality health care, able to take days off to care for yourself or your family, all these items, as leaders, we should try and address. Lastly, we ask you to hold a public forum where economists, activists, community members can come speak for more than a few minutes about these critical topics. The Berkeley Labor Center has done numerous studies showing the impact of having different wage rates between states and counties. The results of these county studies have shown that there is no negative impact to increasing wages for low-income families. We ask you to consider these items and more as you decide the contents of the Palo Alto Minimum Wage Ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Lamont, to be followed by Paula Rug.
Hello, I'm Carol Lamont. When I first came to this city 40 years ago, I wasn't a homeowner. I was a single mom on welfare. I worked for dirt wages. I did clerical work, I did gardening, a waitress. I did whatever I could to survive, and I can't even tell you what it's like to be hungry and watch your kid be hungry. Now, you can only be on welfare with your children for four years. Then what? You work full-time, and then any assistance you get goes away. This is a moral issue. It's way beyond an economic issue. We're talking about survival of families, children, people in our community, people who work here and live in other communities. I urge you to take action on this and bump this wage up as high as we can. It's a moral issue.
Thank you. Paula Rug, to be followed by Aram James.
Good evening. My name is Paula Rug, and I'm here to support you in acting on raising the minimum wage. I am not a minimum wage employee. I am a resident and a homeowner in Midtown for almost 20 years. I'm very glad I live in Midtown and in Palo Alto, and I know that my wonderful life in this quality community is supported in many ways in the daily activities that I do. Many of the services I receive, the places that I go, the shopping that I do in Midtown and in Palo Alto brings me in constant contact with Palo Alto's minimum wage employees. I want these people in their jobs and providing me and my neighbors the quality of services that we enjoy in our quality community. To achieve this, I stand before you and support you in moving forward on raising the minimum wage in our city. Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and San Jose have recently established a timeline to raise the minimum wage. As a city council, I understand you have a priority of healthy city, healthy community. I encourage you to align your actions with that philosophy. I understand, to me, raising the minimum wage is a logical action that moves you forward in supporting the healthy city, healthy community priority. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker on this item is Aram James.
I certainly hope that we can move this to the Policies and Services Committee, and I think it would be particularly compelling to have stakeholders, people that are working at minimum wage jobs, and let's have some small business people come before that committee. Let's kind of have, as another gentleman said, a public hearing on this. You know, I worked for the city of Palo Alto, cutting trails at $1.65 an hour, wonderful job at Foothills Park. Was a laborer, did a wide variety of jobs, and as I raised my boys, I told them, you know, all jobs are important. And I don't know that being a public defender, making a decent salary was a more important job than cutting trails at Foothills Park for the public. You can only have so many CEOs. If you don't have janitors that are well-paid, bus people, butchers, et cetera, it's very difficult to have a city that functions. One of my sons, he might not be happy with me saying this, but he works extremely hard. He has three kids, and he works here in Palo Alto as a butcher, or at least a butcher's apprentice, making $1,150 an hour. His family supports him to make sure that everybody gets by. But yeah, I have both a philosophical bent that we need to pay everybody well, and Palo Alto is particularly well-suited to do that, and I like to call it not a minimum wage, but a living wage. And so I hope that we can listen to the community, listen to everybody, and come together to start at least at $15 an hour, but I'd like to hear something more like $25 an hour. I think my son said to me, he would love it if he could just make enough money to rent a one-bedroom here in Palo Alto. I'm sure everybody would like that. But the point is, let's bring not just the abstractions by us, the folks that are making the good wages that have lived here and have the decent retirements. Let's not make it just an abstraction. Let's have the real working people in this community, and let's have the small businesses here. Let's have a full discussion on the issue, and I'm convinced that, once we do that, we'll be a leader in the country on the wage. Let's go for $25 an hour as the living wage for the city of Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. So we'll return to council for any comments or motions. Councilmember Berman.
So I'll go ahead and move that we refer this colleague's memo to the Policy and Services Committee, supported by appropriate staff as determined by the city manager, to analyze and make recommendations to the city council on a citywide minimum wage ordinance.
Do you care to speak to your motion?
I would not, any more than I already have. Thank you.
Councilmember Sharpe.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the colleagues for bringing this forward. I think this is something we need to do. And I wanted to remind everyone, I know it's in the colleague's memo, that the Santa Clara County Cities Association, which I am the representative for Palo Alto, made this one of their priorities this year. And we're not the only city that's looking at it. I know Campbell's looking at it and other peninsula cities. And when it gets referred to Policy and Services, I'm not saying we should go this way, but one of the things that's interesting is some consistency, possibly, between some of these ordinances. So I think we should definitely look carefully at what the other cities are doing and take the best of it and see how that goes.
Any other comments? Councilmember Phil Seth.
Just a real brief, the standard argument against raising minimum wages is it'll destroy service jobs. Doesn't seem likely to happen in Palo Alto, so I think we ought to go for it.
Seeing no other lights, I'll just say I appreciate colleagues who brought this forward, and time to vote on the board. The motion is to refer the matter of minimum wage to the Policy and Services Committee, supported by appropriate staff, to provide adequate, I'm reading fashion in your typing, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get it out of the book.
Okay. To refer the matter of minimum wage to the Policy and Services Committee, supported by appropriate staff, as determined by the city manager, to analyze and make recommendations to the city council on a citywide minimum wage ordinance. Okay. With that, vote on the board, please. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Niss absent. So with that, we'll go to item number 14, which was, excuse me, item number 13, which is previously item number 14. Colleague's memo from Berman, Burt, Holman, and Niss regarding adoption of a resolution urging Calpers divestment from fossil fuel companies. Councilmember Berman, I know you did lead this one. Do you care to kick it off? And would clear the lights, please.
I'd love to. Thank you very much, and I'll be brief. Will we, sorry, Madam Mayor, remind me of the process. Will we go to public comment after I kick it off, or will?
Well, you're going to kick off the topic, and then we'll have a public comment, although I have no cards at this point.
Yeah. So I'll just briefly kick this off, and then, you know, this was an item that was brought to me by members of the public, so I definitely want to let them have a chance to speak to the item as well. But this is a request and an accompanying resolution requesting that Calpers divest from the top 200 fossil fuel companies that it currently holds as investments. The actual resolution requests that Calpers immediately instruct its asset managers to stop any new investment in companies and corporations whose operations involve the extraction of fossil fuels, and ensure that none of its directly held or commingled assets include holdings in fossil fuel public equities and corporate bonds on or after January 1st, 2020, so approximately five years from now, and that Calpers publish quarterly updates beginning July 1st, 2015, available to the public detailing progress made towards full divestment. So those are kind of the guts of it. But this was an issue that was brought to me by a new organization in Palo Alto called PICA, Peninsula Interfaith Climate Action. And, you know, I think their idea and our request is really a logical extension of many of the policy decisions that the city of Palo Alto has made over the past decade or so. We've steadfastly tried to reduce our use of fossil fuels and promote the use of alternative energy, and Palo Alto is recognized as a worldwide leader in municipal action to combat climate change, and this request and resolution is a logical extension of these efforts. So I'll let members of the public speak, and then maybe speak a little bit more afterwards, but maybe not if not necessary, and I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilmember Berman, and we do have, Debbie's going to speak for these five people. Okay, we do have two individual speakers, Annie Cascade and Wyn Gersich, and then Debbie Maitels will be speaking for five other individuals, or for five individuals total. So Annie Cascade is our first speaker. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I am Annie Cascade, and I just wanted to let you know I'm a member of 350.org and very involved in climate action. And I've done an enormous amount of research, and I'm extremely active in the community on this topic. Divestment in fossil fuels is one of the most important things that cities need to do, large businesses need to do, money talks. Unfortunately, policy is not working for climate action. Our planet is threatened, our humanity is threatened. The action needs to happen yesterday. We're well past the tipping point. These are all facts you know, all facts you can research, and strong action by municipalities has to happen every single day. And I want to thank you for looking at this and encourage you to move forward as quickly as possible and do your part to divest from fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you. Wyn Gersich, to be followed by Debbie Maitels.
I live on a Calper pension, and I was at the ban fracking now thing in Oakland on a Saturday. And it's kind of amazing to think that if they're investing in these fossil fuel things, these oil companies own us. Our whole country is involved. Everything that's wrong about this nation is because of the oil companies. And when, I don't think, people should be supporting this at all, because if anything, we're going to try to get the fracking stopped in this state. They've poisoned our water, they're poisoning our agriculture and everything that we have. And once you poison the water, that's it. And where are these people going to move when they have to leave? This is why the stack 'em, pack 'em housing is happening. And I honestly think that nobody should be investing in these fossil fuels if you want climate change and you want solar energy and all the other things. We can get cars to run on air, like Tata Motors in India. And there's all kinds of different ways to do things to, I'm looking at new technology in Europe all the time, and I get these things and I put them on Facebook, and, you know, showing other ways of doing things. And I hope, if Jerry Brown will ban fracking, that this is something we need to be head of the game and not invest in this at all. Because if New York can ban fracking, we can do it here in California. And the only way we're going to clean this up, and people need to realize, this isn't just the poisons that they're blasting into the ground contaminating our water, this is the air, everything, because it brings up radiation and the methane gas and all the other stuff. And right now, this weekend, check out Gasland and Gasland 2, and there's another one on YouTube called Fracking Hell: The Untold Story. That's really good. It was on Link TV. And check out Anthony DeGraffy. And when he talks about these wells, he's the cement expert, and he says that one in 10 wells will break. And it's amazing that this is something we should not be investing in, and if you really believe in this earth and this planet and saving our water and the people, nobody should be investing in this, and we need to find cleaner energy. And I am a Calper recipient, so I don't want to know that they put their money in supporting these oil companies when we need clean energy.
So Debbie Maitels, who is now speaking for herself, to be followed by Eileen Altman.
Good evening. Debbie Maitels, 2824 Lewis Road in Palo Alto. As the co-convenor of the Peninsula Interfaith Action, or PICA, I'm really here to represent the 152 people whose letters you've received that describe our moral concern about the impact of burning fossil fuels. As other speakers have said, there's really no longer any doubt that fossil fuel emissions are causing sea level rise, extreme weather events, and drought-related crop losses. So it's really time for action. And pulling our investments out of this dirty industry is an important symbolic step in recognizing that we can no longer continue with a business-as-usual source of energy. In addition, as the previous speaker just pointed out, we really have a moral obligation to protect the retirement assets of City of Palo Alto employees. And if, as Deutsche Bank in Germany recently said, quote, "To meet climate change targets, over half of identified fossil fuel reserves will have to stay in the ground." So we really must begin to question how long these investments in fossil fuel companies will have financial value. Basically, if we want to protect our employees' pensions, we need to get Calpers to pull out of dirty fossil fuels. Thankfully, the city of Palo Alto itself doesn't have any investments in fossil fuels, and that's all the more reason for the council to consider the long-term safety of our employees' retirement assets. PICA represents a dozen local congregations, and some of our members are here tonight to deliver letters from their fellow congregants. But first, however, I'd like to ask all of those in the audience who support this divestment resolution to please stand. And behind me, I have Susan Chamberlain, who's going to take a bit of our time to give a statement from First Presbyterian Church, and then Reverend Altman from First Congregational. Susan?
Susan, you can have three minutes, as opposed to taking part of somebody else's minutes. You can have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to speak to the economic reasons for divestment.
Susan, sorry to interrupt, yeah, maybe just...
Is that better?
Perfect.
Okay. I'd like to speak to the economic reasons for divestment. First, multiple studies over five, seven, and 10-year periods have shown that portfolios with... without fossil fuel investments can do as well, if not better, than those with fossil fuels. You have references to these studies in your cover letter regarding this resolution. Second, there is serious risk to not divesting. According to the Carbon Tracker Initiative, 80% of the known oil, coal, and gas reserves have to remain in the ground if we are to stay below the international target of 2 degrees Celsius temperature rise for the planet. As pressure to reduce our use of fossil fuels builds from within our country and from the international community, there will be increasing government regulation to limit carbon emissions, as well as increasing fuel-efficient technology. All of this is predicted to lead to decreased demand for fossil fuels, resulting in, quote, "stranded assets," unquote, of these reserves. Since the share price of fossil fuel companies is partly based on their proven reserves, these shares will become grossly overvalued. Some economists are warning of a coming carbon bubble. For this reason, we are already seeing falling share prices of coal as it becomes increasingly regulated and more expensive. It is expected that oil and gas will take the same course. So not only is divestment from fossil fuels the right thing to do from a moral perspective, but it makes good sense from a financial perspective as well. Please recommend to CalPERS that they divest from fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eileen Altman, to be followed by Shelton Ehrlich.
Good evening. I am Reverend Eileen Altman. I'm one of the associate pastors at First Congregational Church of Palo Alto on the corner of Lewis and Embarcadero. I'm holding in my hand the letters that are signed by my, the members of my congregation in support of this resolution, and I thank you all for considering it this evening. You've heard some of the economic arguments for why this makes sense, as well as some of the moral arguments. Just wanted to say that my congregation, and many of the other congregations represented by Peninsula Interfaith Climate Action, has studied the issues of climate change for many years. And our individual members have worked to make changes in their own personal lives, and those are really important changes. They're necessary, but they're not sufficient. We need massive policy-level changes to address the threat to our climate. And divestment is one of those important policy-level changes, because where we put our money represents our values. Where your treasure is, there your heart will be also. So I encourage you to vote in favor of this resolution. I know that the members of my congregation who sign these letters would be grateful for your yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Elton Sher, excuse me, Shelton Ehrlich, to be followed by Cedric de la Bouchardier.
Thank you. My name is Shelton Ehrlich. I live on North Hampton Drive. I've spent 60 years working on energy development, energy research. A technology that I played an important role in inventing is used all over California to burn biomass. But I'm here in opposition. First, is CalPERS the vehicle to address climate? CalPERS is a sub, is subject to political manipulation and periodic bouts of corruption. In 2004, the board president was removed, forced from office for using his position to punish Safeway during a labor dispute. Despite promises to clean up its act, a recent chief executive of CalPERS is expected to go to prison in May. His partner in crime killed himself in Reno last month. You should work to overturn the CalPERS model. Get our money away from that corrupt system. Our employees should have 401Ks. Is climate change the problem the memo suggests? The memo cites the fifth international, whatever it's called, Fifth Report as predicting a temperature rise range with increasing CO2 emissions. Yet if you follow the debate, as I do, the Fourth Report gave a much higher value for the parameter called sensitivity, which is the measure by which temperature rises with increasing CO2. So they've reduced the lower range of possibilities from 1.5 degrees Celsius to 1 in the most recent report. I predict, based on my experience and knowledge, that the Sixth Report will even have a lower parameter. Also, there has been a total disconnect between the vaunted predictive models that actual temperatures and predictive models and actual temperatures. There has been no measurable temperature increase for at last 17, for at least 17 years. What costs are implied if the goal of the memo were universally adopted? If we were to stop using fossil fuels nationwide just for electricity, we would have to find $3.5 trillion to replace it, or about $40,000 for a typical American family. This memo is misguided in its instrument, CalPERS. It's fact, there is, facts, there is no real problem, and it, and is pernicious in its impact on our nation's families. Thank you.
Thank you. Cedric de la Bouchardier, to be followed by Steve Rainey. And I want credit for pronouncing your name correctly, Cedric.
I'm sorry, nobody can pronounce it.
Several times in one night, even.
Yeah, I give you credit for the effort. So Cedric de la Bouchardier, 741 Josina. I wholeheartedly support this effort, and 99% of climate scientists agree that climate change is an issue. Thirteen of the 14 highest temperature years on record has been since 2000, since 2015 now, so almost all of the past 15 years have been the hottest years on record. So yes, climate change is definitely an issue, and I think that we need to be, you know, we see a lack of action on the federal level, and we're running out of time here, so it's up to individuals, companies, and local municipalities to take up where our national leaders are failing us, and we need to act quickly before we run out of time. So thank you very much for supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Rainey, final speaker.
Thanks very much, council. Wanted to ask Ketye Reeves from St. Thomas Aquinas to bring your letters to the clerk, Shirley Eglington from First Presbyterian to come bring your letters to the clerk, Edith Eddy from Unitarian Universalist to bring your letters to the clerk, and I'm just going to hand off for Grace Lutheran, Beth Arm, Silicon Valley Humanists, All Saints, and Eileen Altman already presented her letters from First Congregational. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. So we return to council for comments, questions, or motion. Councilmember Berman?
So the first thing I'm going to do is ask the clerk to make sure that we don't print off many copies of the 150-plus letters that have just been delivered to you. I don't know, you know, we get a lot of emails as council members, and I'll speak for myself that I don't necessarily always have the time to look at all of them before meetings. I eventually look at all of them. But one that we received a couple of days ago from Debbie Maitels, I think it was from Debbie, had a link to PDF that had 152 signed, individually signed letters, I think a couple dozen of which had notes written as well, that they intentionally delivered in the way that they did so that we wouldn't make lots of copies and waste lots of trees. Thank you to everybody who came and spoke today. Councilmember Wolbach's been trying to get me to view all of our issues through this five-point paradigm, and I can never remember all five points, but I hope I remember the top three, which are value vision policies. I nailed it. All right, progress. And a value of Palo Alto is that we protect our environment and that we try to combat increasing climate change. And a vision, or at least a vision that we've discussed, and will come back to us as we deal with our sustainability and climate action plan, is the idea of a carbon-neutral Palo Alto. We've achieved carbon neutrality in our electricity portfolio, but recognize that it's only a small piece of the puzzle. And I think that our policies, in regards to our policies, and the Reverend said it better than I could, is our investments should reflect our values. And that's what tonight's memo is about and resolution is about. And, you know, the biggest concern was whether or not this would have a negative financial impact, because we also have a responsibility to be proper financial stewards of our resources, and studies have shown that it will not. And so I think that that should allay any fears or concerns that folks have. I've spoken enough to this already. I, oh, I'll move the, I'll make a motion, in fact, that we adopt the attached resolution urging CalPERS to divest its holdings in fossil fuel companies from statewide pension investments. And I do not need to speak anymore to it. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Berman, seconded by Councilmember Wolbach. Do you care to speak to your second? Councilmember Wolbach?
I do. The four biggest challenges that we face in Palo Alto and on the peninsula, in no particular order, are transportation, housing costs, wealth and income inequality, and climate change. And I'm proud that we've addressed each of these four issues in part tonight. Climate change is a top-tier threat to global economic, social, political, and agricultural stability. More importantly for us, within our purview locally, Palo Alto is highly vulnerable to flooding from sea level rise. Palo Alto is also at risk from water insecurity due to diminishing snow packs and saltwater intrusion. Even if we vastly improve our rain-water capture, there is a decreasing amount of rain to capture. Divestment sends a political and financial message. Our voice, joining with others, may nudge CalPERS to divest. CalPERS divestment may send a message to others. Diversion of funds away from fossil fuel companies squeezes them and makes them available for other businesses. We need to do our part. This is but a small, yet important step. I'm in favor of divestment from fossil fuel companies.
I see no other lights, so just one comment then. I've said a number of times that, in the budget cycle, that our values should determine how we spend our dollars. I would say the same thing applies to how we invest our dollars. So I appreciate Councilmember Berman's lead on this, and with that, we will vote on the board, on the motion being to adopt the resolution urging CalPERS divestment from fossil fuel And mysteriously, that has passed on a 9-0 vote, with Councilmember Niss absent. And I want to know who's from Chicago and voting early and often. So with that, we will go to previous item number 14, which is now item number 12. Is that right?
Yeah.
No.
It wasn't.
We are going to item number 12, which is now item number 14.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, I am hoping, we don't have a staff presentation, I'm hoping that the staff report itself is clear. The council has already taken action setting the ordinance...
Excuse me, excuse me, just a moment, city manager. But all those people who are gleefully rejoicing in the back, if you would take your comments to the lobby and help us continue the meeting, it'd be really appreciated.
Is that...
Okay, I'm sorry, city manager.
Thank you. The council has already taken action adopting an ordinance that sets, that establishes these new fees for, one for public safety facilities and the other for general government facility fees. We have this, just have this additional requirement where you actually have to adopt a resolution that sets the fees at a 75% of maximum amount, which was justified in the Nexus study. And we were, we were directed by council to bring that back. I apologize, I was mistaken when we put this on the agenda. I would have put this on consent otherwise, but I would recommend that the council adopt the resolution as attached here, and, but we are, I do have Chief Financial Officer Lalo Perez and staff here to answer any questions if you need to get into that. This sort of had a long and storied sort of review, and there are some larger questions related to development impact fees in general that would, are not really germane to the action that you take here, and they're better suited to some other discussions we can have in finance and in other venues about expanding or deepening our overall development impact fees. Thank you.
And with that, I have no cards from members of the public to speak on this item. Clerks confirm that. Councilmembers, questions, comments, motions? Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Yeah, just one question on packet page 825, maximum fee level. The assumed numbers in there of employees per thousand square feet are 3.0 for commercial, 2.5 for thousand square feet for office. Those are dramatically under our current assumptions of workers per thousand feet. Where do these come from?
Those came from, you're looking at the original consultant recommendation on, you're looking at the page 825, the table on the bottom, that's the level of original?
Yes.
So that has been changed and revised, and it's now on page 824. That's the new table.
Now see three versus four per...
Oh, okay.
Under the office, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
We, we actually hadn't made that change until you asked the question, but it's amazing how responsive the staff is now.
Councilmember Sharf?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Sharf, seconded by Councilmember Berman, to adopt the resolution setting new public safety facility and general government facility impact fees at 75% of maximum levels as directed by council on December 15, 2014, when it adopted the implementing ordinance. Councilmember Sharf, you care to speak to your motion?
I don't.
Councilmember Berman?
No, ma'am.
I see no other lights. All right, so voting on the board. I'm sorry, Councilmember Wolbach?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, that passes on an 8-0 vote, with Councilmember Niss absent.
So we got time to go back to 11?
Don't even go there. So it is time for councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. Okay, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.